Hello, my name is Drew Combs and I'm mayor of Memo Park for 2021. Welcome to the city council's February 9th special and regular city council meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. With that, I'd like to introduce staff and city council members present, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, city council members Cecilia Taylor and Jen Willison. Councilmember Ray Mueller will be joining us shortly, and at that time, the city clerk will note his arrival. Staff present include City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, interim city attorney Kara Silver, and City Clerk Trudy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and again welcoming all of you to our February 9th special and regular city council meeting. At this time, we ask that the city council remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, engaging your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones to introduce items, make presentations, and respond to any questions the city council may have. For members of the public who have public comment or want to provide comment on any items on the agenda, after the mayor calls for public comment, we ask that you click that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at that time. I'd also like to direct you to the handouts that we have this evening, which does include tonight's agenda as well as an update to the January 26 meeting minutes, I believe it's for item G1, for your consideration when reviewing the consent calendar. And that does conclude my introductions. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Great, thanks, City Clerk Heron. With that, I'll turn to the city council and see if there are any items from section J of the meeting, any informational items that you know now that you'll have questions or be seeking additional information from staff regarding. Councilmember Willison?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I don't know if this is what you're asking for right now, but I am going to have a general comment about some of the info items, but it won't be any questions for individual staff members.
Okay. Yeah, I think for our purposes of providing the staff a heads up on whether they need to stay for the entire meeting, I think if you're just providing comment, then they can sort of maybe access those comments later. But, Councilmember Taylor?
I have it. Maybe it is just a comment on item J5.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Nash?
I'm at the outset.
Okay, okay, totally cool. All right. So with that, we'll move on to agenda items under C, the study sessions. We have two separate study sessions on the meeting agenda tonight. In general, since study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The city council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the items return to city council for action. So the first item under, first item for, that's the subject of a study session today is C1, provide direction on water rates and receive an update on Memo Park Municipal Water Operations, including revenues, expenses, and billing services. With that, I'd like to introduce Assistant Public Works Director Chris Lamb to provide a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and good evening, councilmembers. Chris Lamb, Assistant Public Works Director. And as the mayor mentioned, I am going to present tonight on Memo Park Municipal Water and a couple items that we want to cover with the council this evening. So we'll start off the presentation with just a quick, a quick general overview of the water system. We'll dive into the water rates that we're looking to update this year, and then cover some of the miscellaneous ongoing items, revenues, expenses, and some of the COVID-19 impacts. At the end of the evening, we are looking for some council direction on the water rates and the water rate study. And so in the staff report, there were kind of two key elements that we're looking for direction on. One is to confirm the preferred consumption rate structure option. And the second item is to confirm the preferred capital surcharge, capital facility surcharge option. So a quick overview, Memo Park Municipal Water is kind of split between two zones. We have an upper zone and a lower zone. We have 4,400 service connections, and we get 100% of our water from San Francisco Public Utilities. We have a supply guarantee from SFPUC of 4.4 million gallons per day. And there's going to be some ongoing discussion later this spring, in March, as we update our urban water management plan. That's going to look at some of our long-term water supply and water demand as we continue to build out and look at impacts that are coming to us kind of upstream, so to speak. The water fund itself is a self-supporting enterprise fund. That means that the water sale revenue pays for all of the system expenditures, both operating and capital. Those expenditures include an annual transfer from the water fund to the city's general funds to pay for a lot of shared expenses that the water system takes advantage of, that the city offers. It also pays its fair share of insurance premiums and settlements that arise from claims. The water system has a $12 million operating capital budget this year, and the CAFER that was just completed identifies a net position of $38.5 million. And just to break that down, there's kind of three primary buckets of where that, how that $38.5 million comes to be. We have $2.4 million of available cash in the water fund. We have $14.6 million that's already been assigned to capital projects. Those are projects that are underway currently by staff in the utilities group. And we have $21.5 million of investment in capital assets. So that's essentially, that's the value of the system that's in the ground, so to speak. The water fund's broken out between an operating fund and a capital fund. So the revenues on the operating fund come from water sales. It's the consumption charge, meter charge, and there's some other miscellaneous revenues, small amounts of interest gain and those likes. The expenses on the operating side, the biggest one by far, representing about 2/3 of the costs on the operating side, is just the purchase of water from SFPUC. We also have a little over nine FTEs of staffing associated with the water system. Like I mentioned before, the annual transfer and then some other miscellaneous expenses. On the capital side, we have a water, a capital facility surcharge that appears on the bills. So that's dedicated to capital projects, but we also then transfer excess operating revenues into the capital fund to do a little bit more on the capital side. So the expenses on the capital side are CIP projects that show up in the five-year CIP, and we identify those projects based off of the recommendations in our 2018 Water System Master Plan. So I want to, this was not shown in the staff report, but we are, as part of the great study that we're working on, we look at the expenses that we have coming up in the next five-year period. So these are the anticipated rates for SFPUC. And so you can see right now, we're in fiscal year 2021. The SFPUC has already adopted their rates for 2022, which would be year one of our proposed five-year rate study. But what you can see is in years three through five, there are some significant increases projected but not yet adopted by SFPUC. The water rates right now were last updated in 2015, and our last rate increase went into effect in 2019. We were initially planning on presenting the water rate study last, around this time last year, but when COVID came and affected us all, and we had confirmation that SFPUC was not raising their rates for last year, it was decided to hold off on the water rate implementation or the rate study and any resulting increases. The rates right now are based off, there's multiple charges that will show on a bill. So we have a fixed meter charge. There's a consumption-based charge with a two-tier rate structure, the first tier between zero and six. The CCF is 100 cubic feet of water, and 100 cubic feet of water is 748 gallons, just for anyone that's watching. There's also a capital facility surcharge, drought surcharges that can go into effect if an order is placed by the state that identifies the mandate to reduce consumption, and then one-time charges that for new connections to the system. So the, one of the comments that we heard from council in September when we had a study session was to provide this, a kind of a comparison of bills across a lot of the various agencies that are around us. This is, this chart includes both our existing rates and kind of a sneak preview of kind of where we think we're going to be with our upcoming rate study. So we've updated this to reflect a 12-unit of water, 12 CCF average home consumption. So this represents a single-family home that uses 12 CCF, which for the 2020 year is the system average for a single-family home. So the water rate study itself, we're mandated to follow the guidelines of Prop 218. So Prop 218 was a constitutional amendment that was voted on by the, approved by the voters of California in, I think, 1994. It essentially mandates that we need to establish rates that are fair, and they need to be proportional to the cost of the service that we provide. So in order to do that, we look at, we perform a water rate study, and we look at a few different things. There's kind of a few steps that we go through. The first is to identify all of the expenses that the system anticipates to incur over a certain period of time. And so we look at a 20-year financial plan, so we're looking at expenses that we think we'll have over the next 20 years, and what revenues we're going to need over that kind of same period to meet those expenses. And then we really focus in on the first five years to identify how we're going to allocate those, the revenue needs to the users of the system. And so in order to do that, there are some guidelines that our consultants follow. So there's AWWA, which is the American Waterworks Association, kind of sets those guidelines of how to allocate those costs. In September of last year, we also amended our contract with Blackin Beach, so they're helping us to prepare the rate study. We had them under contract over the previous year, and then we amended their agreement to update the rate study to look forward over to the next five years. So kind of a timeline of where we're at right now. Tonight, we're hoping to get some direction on those two items I mentioned before. We've got a follow-up meeting scheduled or planned for March 9th, where we will present the water rate study and request approval to proceed with the proposed rates. And that next step would be to get the authorization to mail out notices to the customers. There's a 45-day period where individuals or customers need to have the ability to protest the proposed rates, and then we would be back in May for a public hearing to hear those protests and potentially adopt a resolution that would set the rates. And if we stay on this timeline, we'll be able to implement those rates effective July 1, which would coincide with our fiscal year. I will say that there is a little bit of wiggle room in here, but essentially by the, by about one council meeting, so not a lot. So getting into the kind of the two questions that we're asking about. So the first is the consumption rate structure. The existing consumption rate structure is a two-tier rate, where we have a tier one that's between zero and six CCF, or two, zero and six units of water, and then a second tier that's anything above that. The tier one rate was adopted in 2015, or the threshold of six units, and it was meant to represent a average household at the time, which was 2.75 people using 55 gallons of water per person per day. So that's indoor water use, that's a relatively conservative amount of water than an average person uses at home, in their house every day. The second tier, anything above the six CCF, was any excess indoor use plus any outdoor use. So we are looking to see if there's, I think, consensus on keeping that structure intact, and then it's frankly a matter of updating the rates to reflect what the revenue needs are to operate the system, or if we want to make changes. So we can eliminate the tiered structure altogether. We can look at changing the threshold between the tiers. And so we've, this doesn't look particularly pretty on my screen, and probably not on yours, but this is some preliminary numbers of what the, what changing the tier would have on the rates. So the, if we wanted to increase that threshold from six units to eight units, or from six units to 10 units of water, then it has an impact on what the rate would be of each of those. At the end of the day, like I said, we are trying to make sure that we generate enough revenue to cover our expenses, and that's really about it. So again, the first question we're asking is confirmation of kind of which of these options, and then options one and three, if there's a desire to look at different thresholds, we can obviously do that, that too. On the next question was on the capital surcharge. So the capital surcharge funds the capital improvement plan for the water system. So the 2018 Water System Master Plan has some pretty hefty recommendations of where we should be going with our capital projects. We've got a plan adopted by council in, every year in the, as part of the budgeting process. So we look at the, adopting the current year plus planning out the next five years. And so we've got a breakdown of what these projects look like if council's interested, but it's also included in the annual budget. I just, one other thing to kind of point out, and that's included in the rate study but doesn't show up in our five-year CIP yet, is the proposed construction of an underground reservoir. And so there's an info item that kind of talks that a little bit as well on the agenda tonight. So that project is pretty pricey, over $20 million to construct an underground reservoir. That project would be, would propose to use either a loan or grants to fund that project, which allows us to spread out that large lump sum payment over a longer period of time. So on the capital facility surcharge, right now, it's $1.50 per unit of water. It applies to both tier one and tier two rates, or the full amount of water usage. It was established in 1990 to fund emergency capital water projects, but it's really been used to just fund any capital projects, frankly, since its adoption. It does not fully fund the capital needs, and so there's some proposed changes that we're looking at to make it a little more transparent on what we're doing with it. So like I said, we can keep the surcharge as it is. It's $1.50 per unit of water that's used by any given customer. That funds about $2 million of year of capital work, but that's not enough really to make headway on our capital plan. We can revise it to reflect the actual amount, and that would then also impact the tiered rates. The tiered rates would actually come down. Or what staff is recommending is option two, which is just to effectively get rid of the capital surcharge altogether, and just lump that cost into the tiered rates. It would be a lot easier and more straightforward for customers to understand on the water bills. And at the end of the day, because it is a flat-rate consumption charge, it wouldn't really, you know, any of these changes wouldn't have an impact on the amount billed by the customer. So I will come back to both of those questions at the end. I want to cover a couple more just general water system updates. So since November 2019, the city's water system, we changed billing contractors, and the new contractor started issuing bills in March of 2020. So that coincided right with our shelter in place and the impacts from COVID-19. And so between those two activities, the city has not been charging for penalties, and we've not been doing any disconnections on the system. And there's state regulations that we're adhering to because of that. But the, you know, water continues to be used. We can see that our water purchases between 2019 and 2020 are pretty consistent. What we have seen is a change in where that water's going. So residential use has increased by about 20%, most likely a reflection of people working from home and spending more time in their home. Our commercial uses has decreased, and our other types of accounts are relatively steady. We've seen less customers on payment arrangements since our presentation in September, likely due to uncertainty about paying future bills, and also just that there's really no penalty right now for not paying your bill. You won't receive a penalty charge. You won't have your waters turned off. But we are trying to be proactive, reaching out to customers that do have outstanding payments. We've done letters. We're planning a door hanger distribution in the upcoming weeks and months. We've reached out by email and phone calls. And as of right now, we have 763 accounts, or really 421 active accounts, that have outstanding payments of 30 days late. So of those 421 accounts, that represents about $330,000. About 40% of that is to customers, that we are, to large customers that we are in contact with and working with on a number of issues, and then a number of accounts that have been that have been closed out. So. Again, I feel like I've been doing a lot of talking here. The requested direction tonight is to confirm the preferred consumption charge rate structure and confirm the preferred capital facility surcharge option. And I've got both of these tables readily available if there's any, if you want me to go back to them. Otherwise, I think that's pretty much the extent of my presentation. I am happy to take any questions now or after public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb, for the presentation. Councilmember Taylor, I see your hand. I was going to go to public comment first before clarifying questions, but if you would prefer to go first, I will defer to your assessment, and so happy if there's something that is definitely top of mind you want to address.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And actually, if you can just go back to slide seven. It was a little small to see the graph, so I just want, I mean, the chart. So I just wanted to, if you could go back to it really quickly. Yes, is there any way to enlarge the chart?
I don't know that I will be able to do this, but that should be publicly available on the city website as well. So this is, this is just the, this is the rate structure that was adopted back in 2015.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll acknowledge that Councilmember Mueller has joined us and asked the city clerk to call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item C1, provide direction on water rates and receive an update on Memo Park Municipal Water Operations, including revenues, expenses, and billing services, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. This will be the last call for any public comment on item C1. Seeing no hands raised. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you for that. If, Mr. Lamb, just one thing, and I know we've touched on this a couple of times when this issue has come up, but I think it bears repeating. When it comes to the notice that's sent out and the ability to protest or to lodge a disagreement with the rate, right, this does not go to water customers, right, necessarily. It is parcel owners, right? And I just think it's important to sort of clarify that point, because even though you may be paying the water bill in some cases, you, because of state law, you don't get a say if you're not the actual sort of, you know, registered owner of a particular parcel.
You're absolutely correct, Mayor. That was probably an oversight in me kind of trying to rush through this presentation, but it's very, essentially, it's the identical process that the city went through on the solid waste rates. It's the same overall process.
Um, I, well, I'll take it to the virtual dais. Are there any sort of clarifying questions? We can do a clear bifurcation of clarifying questions and then direction, or we can mix it up. Vice Mayor Nash?
Thank you. What is the average consumption for Memo Park water customer? In other words, when we're looking at the tiers and it's cut off at six, how many people fall within the six? How many people go over, and by how much on average?
I would say most are over six. That's a pretty conservative amount of water use for any given customer. I don't know that I have the readily available, how many exactly are below and above that, but it's something that we could put together.
Or just, what I would find helpful is what is the average rate?
So the average for, when we look at averages, we really primarily focus in on single-family homes. The other customer classes really vary pretty greatly in terms of the potential size. So for example, a multifamily account may have two or three homes, or, you know, apartments on the account, or it could be, you know, a huge apartment complex. Similar on our commercial accounts, it could be, you know, a small, you know, 800 square foot office, or it could be Facebook, right? So those accounts, the average really doesn't mean much. So what we really look at when we're looking at the averages is single-family homes. Historically, the Memo Park has been around 10 cubic feet, or 10 units of water per month, and what we've seen this past year is that that's increased up to about 12 units of water. And, and what we've seen this past year is that that's increased up to about twelve units of water.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was looking for.
And, and so, Mr. Lamb, with regards to the tiering, right? We don't sort of, though, the tiering is not applied differently between residential and non-residential customers, correct? And so everyone who goes over that six CCF, have we, I mean, I mean, because for me, looking at the, I mean, to, to your two questions, I'll just sort of throw out my, my thoughts. I'm, I'm totally in, in favor of sort of eliminating the sort of capital improvement sort of surcharge. And, and just sort of like baking that into, to the tiering. I, I think it, it will simplify, I, I think, how people understand their bills and, and how they can sort of project how much their bills might be. And obviously, it seems like it'll, it'll be simpler on, on the city side. But my thing is, is that when it comes to, and, and I know this sort of issue has come up in the past with regards to sort of droughts. It's like, like, how do we sort of get to, like, making people pay for egregious use of water resources? Right? And, and so it's, it's sort of hard to, to your point you have, like, when you, your tiering doesn't sort of look at classes of customers differently. But like, so if the average is, is twelve CCF, like, in, in Menlo Park, I, I think some sort of tiering that's sort of, I think, zero to six, right? That sort of benefits people who are very conservative. And then, you know, six to twelve, that, you know, you know, tends to get people who are just under that average. But then sort of really, it's like, if you're above average, then we're gonna even sort of maybe charge you more. Or like, are there some residential customers, and I'm sure with very large parcels and, and very lush landscaping, who use something like twenty CCF, right? And to me, it seems like we should have some way to, and maybe it's not possible, but some way to, when you have like those residential customers, really getting into, you know, enormous usages of water that, that we sort of are able to, you know, make them pay a premium for, for that.
I, I, I totally under, understand your, your, your statement, Mayor. I think that the, the challenge is with the, the, the top two eighteen requirements and essentially needing to be able to justify the, the, the rate. So it, 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 it cannot be just a, a penalty for, for, for using the excess water. So we can, you know, what, one of, one of the things that, that, that makes up kind of that, that deal, that difference in the, the, the cost of the rates. You know, we can look at funding water conservation measures out of, out of the higher rate. You know, so that's, that's one of the things that, that causes that, that, that second tier of water to be a higher, a higher cost is we're, we're funding a program out of that, that, that we're not charging or allocating those costs to the, the, the lower rate. Because, you know, anybody in that, in that first tier, if, if they are only in that first tier, they're, they're probably already doing a, a good job of, of conserving water. But the, 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 the challenge is in identifying, you know, what are, what are those activities or programs that we're going to assign to that higher rate? And, and we can, we can, we can look into it. So in, in the past, Menlo Park had a, a four-tier rate structure. That was, I think, a bit cumbersome for our, our billing contractor to try and, to manage and, and to, to explain to customers when, when they, when they have, you know, comments or concerns on their bills. So the, the, the two-tier rate structure is, is again, a little, a little simpler for, for the, the average user to, to understand. You know, there, there's, there's our, our, you know, already questions that, that, that pop up that, that our, our contractor handles when, 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 when folks have, have those types of questions. But, but that's, that's kind of the, the crux of the, the, the issue with, with simply charging more to the, to the high users.
Anyone else, questions, want to provide thoughts? Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb, for your presentation. You mentioned that the, the assumptions about how much a typical household uses was conservative. Can you elaborate on the assumptions baked in to the, the average usage?
So I, I think that there's, there's published, there's published data on, on how much a, a, an average person uses for, on, for indoor, indoor water use on, on any given day. And I think if, if you, if you go, if you look up those, those published averages, usually it's a range of fifty to seventy-five gallons of water per person per day. So the, 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 the way that the tier, the, the first tier of water was, was established as, as part of the twenty fifteen rate study was, you know, we, we looked at the twenty ten census data that indicated that there were roughly two and three quarters of people in, in any given household. And, and we applied the, a fifty-five gallon per day water usage allocation to that. And that's, that's really where the, the, the six units of water over the, the, the course of a month works out to.
Okay, thank you. So I'm kind of comfortable, I, I'm open on this topic. But my initial thoughts were to keep the tiers, at least for the residential users, as they are. I'd be open to doing a one rate for commercial if, if other council members are. And I actually like the, the, the billing broken out for transparency. I guess it's kind of like when you order delivery, do you like, you know, a bigger fee? Or do you like seeing all the charges? But i- if, if the goal is to make sure that the residents are aware that there's massive capital expenditures, then I think there is some value and I'm calling that out. But I'm, I'm open to hearing what others think and I'm, I'm flexible on that. So I'm curious to hear what others have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. See anyone else want to provide their, their thinking or direction? Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. Um, I am also in favor of the two tiers. And I don't have a strong preference on whether or not we break out the cost or not. I, I can see the advantage both ways. And just, I guess one question is, do we ever look at what other? There's three other water districts. Obviously, the, the largest of the other three water districts is Cal Water Bear Gulch. Do you ever take a look at what the rates and what is there? Because, well, I can tell you, as a Cal Water user, they break it at ten CCF. I don't have any problem with six. It's just, I guess what I'm wondering about is the bottom line, how the bottom line ends up comparing at the end of the day.
Yes, I, I will say, we, we absolutely do look at, at our neighboring agencies to see, see how our rate structure is, is, is structured at all and what the comparison is. I, I will say that where, wherever, wherever we, we establish the, the threshold between the, the first tier and, and the second tier, the, the, the user that will benefit from that the most is the one that is right down the threshold. So if you are a, a six unit of water of user right now, and we went to a, 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 a structure that, that changed the threshold to ten units, what you're gonna see is that, that first tier of water price increase. And so if you continue to use your six units of water, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna pay a little bit more than, than what you used to. If you use ten Williams of water, you're gonna get a, a smoking deal. You're, you're, you're only paying the, the low rate. So you're, 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 you're not paying, you know, the, the, the tier one plus a, a, a portion of tier two. And then if you're, if you're a higher tier user, it's eventually going to, to, to flip back at some point out in the, in the, in the study to, to, to break even again.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. So I appreciate that. And I tend to think it's great to try and encourage conservation. Have we had people comment much about the six CCF? Like, do customers ever, well, complain about that or anything? Because if, if they don't, I would tend to say it's good where it is.
I, I, we, I can, I can definitely, we can look into that to see if there's a breakdown of, of that in terms of the, the concerns that are raised. I, I'm not aware of any significant amount of, of concern over the, the six CCF at this time.
Very honestly, if you're not aware of it, I would assume it's not a, not a big issue. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Lamb, Councilmember Wilson brought up this idea of providing one rate for commercial or non-residential customers. That's not currently the status quo, correct?
Correct.
And so how does, how would implementing something like that look with that at additional complication? Because that categorization is, is not as easy as it may sound. Or is it, would it, would it be fairly easy to adopt one rate for, for non-residential customers?
So I, I, I would, I would say from, from the implementation standpoint, it is, it's, it's fairly easy. So it's, it's, you know, that, that's, that's definitely one of the options that, that staff is presenting. As we've run some of the models based on, on how we allocate expenses to, to different user types. So what, what would happen is, is that there would be a, a, a different rate for commercial. So we would have a tier one and a tier two for our residential customers. And then there would be a completely separate rate for, for our commercial customers. And, and by pulling, or by anything that's non, non-single family, by, by pulling that out, it, it does, I, I will say, the, the, the models that we've run under our cost allocation modeling was, is, is that it would cause an increase to the single-family home customers.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you for that clarification. It was in the staff report as one of the options, which is why I brought it up. But I forgot about unintended consequence there. And my guess also would be that smaller businesses may also have increases. Would that be, whereas larger corporate customers might not.
Right, right. So you, you're absolutely correct, Councilmember Wilson. So the, the, the rate, if you want to think of it this way, the, the, the rate that would be established for the, for the non-residential would, would be somewhere between the tier one and tier two, essentially. And so a, a, a very, very large customer would be getting a, a break on their bills. And, and the really, the really small customer wouldn't, wouldn't be taking advantage of the, of the tier one rate.
Councilmember Wilson.
I withdraw my support of that suggestion. Thank you.
Very good. That was easy enough. So it, it seems as though there's, is, is general support about keeping the tiering, keeping the, the, the two tiers. Is, is there support with keeping it at, at six CCF? I just want to make sure that, like, or, or is there a desire to, to move that someplace else? Okay, I'm, I'm fine with the six. I, I think I heard from the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Wilson. And so, so, okay, so, so I think, I think there is some sense of, of, of consensus there. And so then the other thing is, is, is the capital improvement sort of surcharge. Now, Mr. Lamb, you had said that, that currently, like, some funds just generally from the rates do go to capital improvement projects, right? Not just the, the capital improvement fee? Or, or did I, did I misunderstand that?
Right, so, so the, the, the capital surcharge, the, the funds generated from the capital surcharge go directly into our capital fund that, that, that then gets allocated to specific CIP projects. In addition, any, any excess revenue at the, kind of at the end of the fiscal year, we, we would transfer over into our capital fund to, to pay for projects also. So I think what, what staff struggled with is it's, it's great, I think, to, to, to show on the bill that there's, there's this capital infrastructure need and some of your money that is going to fund, to fund those things. But it's not, not truly transparent in the sense that that's the only money that's, that's going to, to capital projects. So, you know, i- in one sense, you know, our, our, our thought was if, if we're not being totally transparent in that sense, then, then why, why even show it? But on the other, on the other hand, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's good to, to, to bring attention to that.
Yeah, I'll just chime in again on my thinking and then, and then shoot to Councilmember Wilson. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm all about sort of being completely sort of transparent and, 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 and visible with regards to these things. But, but then it does go to the point of like, I, I know when I pay my water bill, it's not just for the water. I, I know I'm not just paying for that, that, that cost of, of the water, but like all of the infrastructure that, that goes into being able to deliver that water, you know, into my home. And so like, it seems to me if, if there is like, then the sense of, of like, we're gonna set aside and say that this is a capital improvement surcharge or capital project surcharge. But then that doesn't really reflect all the money that goes into, there, there is a bit of a disconnect. I'm, I'm not like, you know, if there's a desire to retain it, like I said, it does provide transparency and visibility. And so that's, that, that's fine with, with me. But generally, based on what I, I heard, I think my preference would, would be to, you know, bake that in. And in, in the bill, like, right, some, on some regular or semi-regular basis, have some statement and saying that like, you know, just so you're aware, obviously, your, your, the, the rates we charge you aren't just for the water that you use, but for all the infrastructure that it takes to be able to deliver the water from, from Hetch Hetchy down to, to, to you and Menlo Park. But, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilson and then Vice Mayor Nash.
Yeah, Mayor Combs, I think we're totally on the same page. I was wondering, you, you hit the nail on the head, if there is a way to just have a notation on the bill? Because while Mayor Combs, you might get that the pipes and the infrastructure is something we pay for. I'm not sure if everybody is thinking that much about this infrastructure. So I'm totally comfortable rolling it all together. And I think highlighting however possible, kind of what's involved is a great suggestion.
Vice Mayor Nash.
So I have a comment, but I think Councilmember Taylor might have been trying to.
Oh, was she? I'm sorry, I can't, I couldn't.
Another comment down there.
Thank you. It's okay, I was informed that when I raise my hand, my name blocks my hand. So I have to raise it on the right side. But, but essentially, you actually said what, exactly what I was gonna come on, comment on. So as far as the, the capital facilities surcharge, my question is, will, you would inform someone that you're going to lump that cost into, you're gonna streamline it? Like, you'll alert the customers about that before you did it?
Right, so, so what would happen essentially is, is the, the dollar, the dollar fifty per unit of water would, would just get added into the, it, it would get added into the, the tiered rates. And then, and then that separate line item would, would just come off the bill completely. And then in terms of the, the transparency, I, I, I don't want to make it sound like, like there, there's a, a, a lack of transparency. The, the, the transfer of the funds are still, they're, they're, they're part of the city budget. They would still occur, you know, in, in, in the public forum, that, that there's a transfer occurring between, between the, the, the operating fund and the capital fund. So it, it, it's not like somebody, if they, if they really wanted to go find that information, it, it, it is available and it is, it would be publicly available. It's, it's just, it, the, the, the term capital wouldn't, wouldn't appear on, on the bill unless we incorporate that, that type of note, which I think is a, a good idea. unless we incorporate that type of note, which I think is a good idea in general to kind of probably explain to the customers all of what's kind of going into the expenses that they're paying on their bill.
I had one other comment, if you don't mind, Mayor Combs. And that is just going back to the tiering. I'm supportive of whatever is going to incentivize water conservation. So that's generally, and four definitely isn't an option for me. And then, how well is everything working as it is, is my question. So maybe we don't need to change. That I'm not sure of. But my input is basically whatever is going to encourage water conservation. And I hope I'm not one of those that use 55 gallons of water per day. That's a lot of water.
I think on that note, we can take the direction that's given tonight. But what we can do as we kind of finish out the report, we can look at how many customers, you know, are in, I guess, near that threshold. I think it probably makes sense to, in an effort to incentivize conservation, to have a number that's attainable. Right? If you're, if you're, if so much of our, if so many of our customers are, you know, so far above that, then they're, you know, they may not be incentivized to try and reach that lower number. But so we can take a look at that. We'll take the direction and I think we can provide some additional information at the next council meeting.
I mean, Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. Actually, one comment about that is, I actually think because it will reduce the bills, people will be incentivized to conserve even if they're above that threshold because it will reduce their bills regardless. My question, though, is, can you explain how it works for multifamily apartments and multifamily residences? Do people get their own bill? So how does it work with the six CCF?
Right. So a multifamily complex really only has a single meter that serves the entire site, so to speak. And so typically, the customer is either the property manager or, you know, an HOA in certain cases. And then it's up to them and through agreements with their tenants on how services are split out. So some multifamily complexes, they will sub-meter utilities and they'll allocate those costs accordingly based off of the sub-meter data. Others, I think, they'll do flat rates or it'll just be essentially, you know, you won't pay for water. It's just built into your overall rent. So it really kind of varies on a case-by-case basis. But typically, there's really only a single point of contact and a single bill that the city is sending out for those, that type of classification.
And so because there's more people there, they still are getting the allocation as though they're based on a 2.75-person household, even though there's many more individuals there. I'm not sure if I can do it differently. I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. That is a challenge with the rate structure as it is. So each individual unit is not allocated, a first six-unit allocation of water under tier one because it's tied to just the master meter.
And I think, and I'll go to Councilmember Mueller, but sort of probably more importantly is that some large percentage of residents in Menlo Park who live in multifamily housing actually don't have any visibility into their water usage, right? And so they can't even, we can't even like sort of try to encourage them to use less water because they don't know how much water they're using. I mean, I know as not too long ago being, you know, living in an apartment in Menlo Park, couldn't tell you how much water we used. And it was something that the landlord just baked into the rent, right? And so we, you know, and obviously there wasn't sub-metering in the building. But that, I know, is something that a lot of communities have faced and some even going to sort of starting to implementing requirements regarding sub-metering specifically because of this issue, so that you could have all of your customers knowing what their water usage is and then sort of then giving them some encouragement or target by which they could conserve more. I'm not saying that, you know, I know that's a Herculean effort, but that is an issue. Councilmember Mueller.
So I think I'm in a little bit of a different place. I'm fine, and that's with the capital facility surcharge. So I actually would like to maintain the surcharge. And the reason is that I actually think it's good for for the council and for the public to see that surcharge and the council to keep track of what the addition is that's required every year to that. And that's in the backdrop of transparency around the discussion of whether or not we keep the, we keep this water, Menlo Park, municipal water facility. Now, there's been discussion over time of whether or not that was something that should be actually transferred to a different, to a different entity. I'm not supportive of that at this time. But I do know that it's my expectation that those surcharges, well, I know that there's, well, those water main placements are taking place right now. And I think that, and so there's full transparency around what those costs are, that that'd be something that the, that our ratepayers be able to see and keep track of. With that backdrop, looking at this, I would be concerned that someone who's advocating in the city that, you know, we wanted to do, that they wanted to do something different with that was that we were moving the surcharges away so people couldn't see the capital expenses around that. And I don't think there's any reason to really open the city up to that sort of criticism. I think what the capital surcharges are, we own, we put in front of people. And what the CIP transfer is, we own and we put in front of people. So I'm, but I also respect, I respect where the council would be going on this. Thank you.
So certainly, I need to step away for a moment, but go. So then, Mr. Lamb, so obviously, when this comes back, that'll be, an option will be to bake it in. And then you can sort of say, and then, you know, we can keep it separate as it is now. And then, you know, the council can ultimately decide where there is a majority support. What it's, you know, so assuming that into the rates are having that out separately. So is there, is there any additional direction that you think you need that you haven't heard as far as, like, you know, moving this to the next step?
No, I think, I think we're in a good place and right on time, I think, of where we anticipated to be. So just to confirm that, you know, we have a consensus on keeping the kind of the existing two-tier rate structure, keeping that transition at the six units of water threshold. And what we'll do is, we will go ahead and show the capital surcharge blended into those rates for when we come back to council in March with the kind of the draft study that we're ready to present. But I just, it is, it would be relatively simple enough, I think, to pull that back out and have it be its own surcharge if at that time, there's a preference to do that.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to add? Councilmember Taylor. I saw your hand that time.
Thank you. Just want to follow up on a comment that Vice Mayor Nash made earlier. And it's just about visit, well, actually, Mayor Combs, you made the comment about visibility into your usage. Is there a way to know how many ratepayers are actually the renters? So the renter is actually receiving the bill. Is there a way to know? Because I know some areas have a high number of renters. And so just, again, thinking about how many people understand their usage, that there's visibility into it. So just curious.
Let me, I think that's a great question. And I, let me see what information we have already available. I think we, I think we can put together a summary kind of of that. I just don't, I don't have that ready off the top of my head right now.
Mr. Lamb, correct me if I'm wrong. So like, if it's a renter of a single-family home, generally in most cases, that person is paying the water bill, right? What we, where there's a distinction is sort of multifamily, right? And certainly, I wouldn't say like all of the older multifamily, which is what is predominant in Menlo Park, there hasn't been a sub-metering, right? And so there isn't, in most cases, separate bills going to, or in none of those cases, what the bill that gets received from the city is being paid by the renter, right? That'd always be paid by whoever is the landlord, property manager, parcel holder. And then whether they have the ability to sub-meter and then issue sort of have their own sort of billing arrangements would be separate, correct?
Right, yeah. So I think this is, we have some data analysis geeks here on city staff that I think will enjoy this challenge of putting together the, and solving this kind of puzzle of where are, how many of our customers are the actual recipients of the bill, so to speak, right?
Yeah, all right. Well, thanks. Well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you all.
With that, we'll move on to our second study session item of the evening. It's a pension liabilities presentation with actuary consultant. To introduce the item, we have administrative assistant administrative services director Dan Jacobson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Give me just a moment to start my presentation. So at this time, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. So thank you. As the mayor mentioned, Dan Jacobson is Assistant Administrative Services Director. And joining me today is Nina Pledgie, the Chief Actuary for Gov Invest. Gov Invest is a service the city contracts with to help understand and visualize the city's pension liabilities. So she will be giving the majority of the presentation. I will just be doing a brief introduction in terms of what staff is looking for. So staff is seeking direction today on two things. The first is unfunded pension liability funding ratio. So this is essentially a target ratio in terms of what amount of the overall liability is funded by the city and a target date for that. So whether that is, typically, these would be fairly far in the future. So whether, you know, 2026, 27, or further out, and then preferred funding strategy. So there are a number of opportunities for this, including additional payments, which the city has pursued in the past. A Section 115 trust, which is an irrevocable trust and is typically used for rate smoothing. The use of an alternate discount rate, or the city council could give direction not to pursue any of these and just pay the CalPERS minimums. Again, to the comment about study session and general direction, none of these would require action by the city council tonight, but would be incorporated into the budget. So that is the action that the council would take eventually. And so with that, I will turn it over to Nina, and I will go off screen.
Great. Can everybody hear me? Yes. Hi, I'm Nina Pledgie. I'm an actuary with Gov Invest. So we've put together this presentation. Feel free to interrupt me at any time with questions. I don't know all of your level of understanding of pension plan topics. So if I'm going too fast or I'm going too slow, you already understand all this. Just let me know. Okay, so let's go to the next slide. So our presentation today will cover pension plan basics. Then we'll talk about hurdles and other considerations in funding your pension plan. And then we'll look at how your agency, how Menlo Park is doing relative to your funding targets. So we can go to the next slide, please. So first, pension basics. Do you all have some understanding of your pension plan? Yes? Kind of? Okay. Well, let's go on. So as part of CalPERS, you're in the CalPERS Defined Benefit Pension Plan. And to fund those pension promises, it's similar to other types of retirement plans out there where either a participant or an employer set a retirement goal. And that can include how old people should be when they retire, how long people will live, and what the expected investment earning rate, earnings rate is over time, an average. And then what's sort of either savings balance in a 401K-type situation or a 457-type situation, or replacement income goal is desired. So for example, would a 60% replacement of income be a good goal? So all those are taken into account. And then an initial savings rate is determined to achieve those goals that have been set. So in your case, you're in CalPERS. It's a defined benefit plan. And these goals have been set with, with Pepper People, miscellaneous Pepper People is the expected retirement age of 62. And the current investment earnings rate is 7%. And life expectancy goals are set by studying CalPERS mortality. And one of the key differences between the defined benefit and the defined contribution plan is who bears the risk if these assumptions don't hold true? If you don't earn 7%, if people live longer than expected? And mostly, the agencies bear the risk. So let's go on to the next slide. So here's an illustration of what we call mortality risk, which is outliving your money. So the gray scale on the left is the buildup of what we call the accrued liability. Someone gets hired, let's just say, age 30. And over time, money is put aside for this person. And we get to retirement age and there's a pot of money built up saved for this person. And then there's the drawdown period and sort of the teal color. And if that person happens to live quite a long time, then that money can be outlived. And there's a deficit shown by the red. And in this case, if the mortality is not estimated well, then the agencies in CalPERS bear that funding risk for the mismatch between expected life expectancy and what actually happened. So of course, on average, you have other people who, this is mortality risk. You might have people who die sooner than expected. And then you have what's kind of, it's a little insensitive, but that would be called an actuarial gain in that case. Okay, let's go on to the next slide. Also, retirement plans, so mortality is a big issue in retirement plans. But investment earnings is really one of the biggest drivers. And the idea is that money's put aside while an employee is an active employee. And that money earns from various investments, that money builds up to a bigger pot. And from this graph, you can see on the bottom, the black is the money that's actually being put aside. That's called the normal cost in a defined benefit plan. And then the teal bars are the investment earnings. So you can see over time that the investment earnings are more than half of what's being put in. And so investment earnings are very important. And there's a lot of thought putting into, put into choosing the investment earning assumption. And for CalPERS, that's currently 7%. All right. So any questions yet? No? Okay, let's go on. So if you have a lower investment rate of return, then you'd get what's called an unfunded accrued liability. So this, you can see this is building on. this, you can see this is building on the prior graph, but now that the little teal part, the investment earnings is actually smaller. Because in this example, the 7% discount rate or investment earnings hasn't been met. So we developed this unfunded liability over time, and that's represented by the red. If you consistently miss your target, you're going to have an unfunded liability. So another way, unfunded, unfunded liability is the amount of assets short of the funding target. So somebody has to make that up eventually. Okay, next slide. So the market's been, I've been in this, been an actuary for 30, 34 years. And the market's done interesting things in those 34 years. So this graph starts at 2007. And you can see what the expected assets would have been, that dotted line on top. And then you can see over, over time, how we've had negative returns. We had a recession, 2009 had negative 24%. And even though there were, there were some big gains, it wasn't enough to, to make it as if they had, the investment return assumption had always been met. Okay, next slide, please. All right. So just a little bit about pension plan jargon. I already talked about assumptions. Assumptions are targets or goals set by the, I'd actually go with expected results that your actuary sets. The most important ones really are the discount rate, which means how much, how what rate you think the assets will return, and the mortality, and then also retirement assumptions, how many people are going to retire at what age? It's a very important assumption. And then what happens is the actuary every year does a snapshot of the fund. It looks at, the actuary looks at the actual experience, meaning how many people did retire? How much did salaries go up? What did the assets return? How many people died? Does a snapshot, looks at the actual results, and then looks at the, oh, y'all went away for a second there. And then looks like, and then compares it to actual. And then you get either a gain or a loss. So that's what experience is. Normal cost is the initial contribution rate. If we think back to that, that very first slide, someone is hired, we look at the expected amount of money needed when they retire, and we set a normal cost rate that's supposed to remain a level percent of pay over time. So that's what normal cost is. It's a, it's like a savings rate that, that should accumulate to the money needed to fund somebody's retirement benefit. And the normal cost is funded by employee and employer contributions. And those vary depending on if you're classic or pepper. Okay, so present value projected benefit is basically the, the target funding amount, but in today's dollars discounted back to today's dollars. Accrued liability is the target funding progress. So you're never, as you're, as you're funding, let me think how I want to say this. As you're, as you're funding, you're not going to have all the money you need. Let's say your employee is 45. They're hired at 30. They're 45 now. You're not expected to have all the money, money needed for them to retire at 60. You're expected to have this accrued liability. So it's a target that's reset every year. Then the unfunded accrued liability is that the amount you might fall short of the funding target, which we talked about earlier. Then now we get to the interest, well, I shouldn't say it. Now we get to, well, what happens? I've talked about, okay, you, you have mortality risk, you have funding risk, you have investment risk. So what happens if you do develop this unfunded accrued liability? Well, you have to set up what's called a base, and then you have to pay it off. It's like a house loan or a car loan. So amortization schedules is set up, and that gets you back on track. And then finally, the annual required contribution is the normal cost, the cost of the benefits being earned each year, plus a payment to get the funding back on track, the amortization of the unfunded accrued liability. This is lots of acronyms and actuarial jargon. So I'm going to stop and take a breath. Any questions? No? Okay. Let's go on to the next slide. So that was, we, we went through the, the 101, which is how, how you, how CalPERS even comes up with how much money you're supposed to put in every year. And then what's behind those calculations? And now what are some other things we need to think about and hurdles? Let's go on. So like I said, bases are set up. And there was the Great Recession, 2009, there was a huge asset loss. And an amortization base was set up for that. And that is not yet paid off. So that's still being paid off. We have more recent investment losses. 2019 was very small. It was 6.7% return versus 7%. So very small investment loss that year. 2020 investment loss, only, we only saw 4.7% on CalPERS assets. So that's a much bigger loss. And we could be hopeful for 2020. So on June 30th, 2020, CalPERS will take that snapshot of the assets and calculate an investment return and see if there's a gain or a loss. So we'll see. And then what about the CalPERS 7% investment earning goal? Well, we've looked at the projected capital market assumptions, read a number of predictions and projections. And most are saying that in the near term, the next five to 10 years, that 7% is, is maybe a little aggressive, that in the next five to 10 years, we expect the market is actually to underperform 7%. So CalPERS does examine that discount rate, that 7% earnings goal every couple of years. And we anticipate they're going to be looking at that in November 2021, which would set the, the June 30, 2022 discount rate. So it's not anticipated discount rate change this coming valuation cycle. Okay, let's go on. And here's this, a slide that shows some of the events over the years. This is directly from CalPERS. The source of this is CalPERS. And it's showing, sorry, very small, so I have to put on my glasses. It's showing economy being strong. There are various bills that changed the unfunded liability impacting the funded status. And then we had the dot com crash. We show discount rate, if you can believe, was eight and eight and a quarter back in 2004. And they lowered it to seven and three quarters. We had a recession and Pepper law, and we've gone then to seven and a half, and now we're at seven. So that top line, the solid line is the funded status. In other words, what percent of assets cover the accrued liability? So you can see it was close to 100%, went way up, hang, it hung in there, but then the Great Recession and the change in the discount rate really dropped the funded status down. And it's been climbing. Well, it climbed up, and now it's back down again. So it's kind of an interesting graph. All right, go on. And here's historical investment return. So the solid red line is the discount rate. And you're never going to earn exactly 7%. Actuaries know that their, their assumptions are their projections, and they're never going to be met exactly. And so you can see over time that there were some really large rates of returns. And then there were negative years and big negative years over time. So it's good to look at this over a long period of time, knowing that 7% is never going to be exactly met. The idea is that over the long term, over 20, 30, 40 years, that you're going to get around 7% average. Okay, go on. So now we're to the next part. How are you, is your agency doing? So let's go to the first graph. These graphs cover the software. So the, the blue on the bottom is your assets. And then the red is the unfunded liability. And then the darker purple, purplish blue line on top is your crew liability. So based on CalPERS, CalPERS funding policy is to drive you to 100% funded over some years. And so based on the current basis you have now, you could see that at some point in the future, that red turns into just a little bit of green, meaning you're 100% funded. And this is assuming all assumptions are met, and assuming a level population, level active population. So the software assumes the number of employees you have remains level. All right. So let's go on to the next slide. Now, to show you the impact of different investment returns, we projected the unfunded accrued liability balance. And we use a number of investment returns, 6%, 7%, 5%, I should have said that, 5, 6, 7, and 8%. So you can see how the UAL balance goes down if you have a higher investment return. And that's just saying the assets are out earning the assumption. So the UAL balance goes way down, if that goes negative. And you can look at the, the light green line, the 7%, and it gets around zero, and it'll stay around zero. But if you never make, if you never make that 7% on average return, then your UAL is just going to flatten out and just stay there. So next slide, please. And now we have the planned funded status. That's the flip side of the UAL. In other words, it's a ratio of assets to liabilities. And so again, on, on the, the black line, our funded status climbs up, and that's the 8%. And then the, the 7%, which is the actual assumption, is just right below that. And then we have the, if you, if you never make your 7%, you're never going to make your 100% funded status. Okay, next slide, please. So now what about your contribution? So the orange part on top is your normal cost. So like I said, the normal cost is the amount of benefit, the amount of money put aside each year for the active employees currently earning benefits. The purple on the bottom is unfunded accrued liability payment. Those, you're paying off those bases. So you can see that it's projected to climb up over time. And then as those bases are paid off, as you get to 100% funded, if all assumptions are exactly meant, then you would only have the normal costs to pay some years down the line. So that's, that's always the goal, to get to 100% funded and only have to be paying the normal cost of current employees. All right. So next slide, that might be it. Questions? So that's our presentation. It was a lot. It's very technical. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, before we go to council questions, let's go to a public comment. And so public questions, and then we'll, we'll come back to the.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item C2 regarding pension liabilities presentation with actuarial consultant, please engage that and feature the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council. So this will be the last call on any public comment on item C2. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So questions? Councilor Wallace.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and thank you for that really helpful presentation. I think every time I hear a presentation about pensions and CalPERS, I understand a little bit more. So it's good to, to go through the basics and everything. I, I think I have about three questions. So, so it's, so one of the themes of what you were saying was that it looks like this, assuming all of this assumptions are hit. And it's, I think the underlying message was that there's no way the assumptions will all remain constant. But it's like a moving target constantly.
That's right. That's right.
And so while, you know, 100%, you know, even if we got to 100%, it wouldn't even necessarily stay at 100%. Because it's like the, the ground is lava, like it's always moving around. So given that, in terms of, you know, I've heard like 70 to 80% of unfunded or funded is like a typical target. How, how does that relate to like bond, like our ability to, to get, to borrow money and stuff like that? Or can you elaborate on, given that 100% is a, is a moving target, and we may never get there, like, yeah, if you could offer some.
Okay. Well, first of all, you may, you may get there. And in fact, remember, there was one slide that showed it was 100% funded at one point, but the discount rates were overly optimistic. And, and that's the pretty, one of the main drivers behind why, why it's unfunded this point, because we, as you saw some years ago, we were at eight and three quarters, did I say? Now we're down to 7%. That's a huge change in liabilities. And CalPERS has changed their amortization policy, shortened them, so they're all 20 years. And things are going to be amortized more quickly. But as far as ability to get your bond rating, yeah, funded percentage does affect bond rating, for sure. And I'm, I'm not an expert on what percentage would get you a better bond rating. I can't really answer that. But it does absolutely affect your ability to, to get loans and your bond rating.
My, my.
Something to consider.
Yeah, my understanding is that Menlo Park has a really high bond rating, but our current funded level is like 74% or something. So I'm just wondering, like, what are the consequences, or at what point does it get like shady in terms of our ability to borrow?
Again, I'm sorry, I'm not an expert on.
So it might be better.
Bond ratings. Yeah.
Mr. Jacobson, do you want to chime in a little?
Sure. So a great question. Bond ratings really do take into account a huge number of factors. And so pension liabilities are only one of them. One of the, the major factors is essentially the general tax base of a city and how stable that is. So for the city of Menlo Park, there are a few major components of that, property tax being by, by far the large one. And property tax has been very resilient. So that is, that is going to be one of the, the major and critical components of a bond rating that, and then other factors such as pension funding status would be others that would affect it.
Okay, that's helpful. Can you speak to, and I don't know if this is for Mr. Jacobson or Ms. Pledgie, is it?
Pledgie, yes, good.
How, we hear a lot from some constituents about staffing levels and the impact of current staffing on pensions. Can you speak to, to how that fits into our liabilities over time?
Okay. So every person you hire is, would be in CalPERS, and every person you hire would have this associated normal cost of benefits earned. So when you hire, you know, you hire a 30-year-old, 25-year-old, they're going to come in with, if they have no prior CalPERS experience, they're going to come in with zero unfunded accrued liability. So they don't show up on day one, and you instantly are in, in the red. They show up on day one, and there's zero liability. They have zero service. So over time, the normal costs are put away, and an unfunded liability might develop with this individual, any individual, but you're not in the hole by hiring more people. You do, of course, bear the cost of the, the the additional benefits being earned. So if you have 120 people versus 100, you're going to have higher normal costs every year.
Okay, so, so just to confirm, the normal costs would obviously remain, but unless assumption targets, I don't know if I'm using the right jargon, unless things changed with assumptions, then you wouldn't accrue any additional unfunded liability. Is that correct?
Well, more or less, but, but there's every year in that snapshot date. So you hire someone, there's, there's not an initial unfunded liability hiring it. So with no CalPERS service, you put away the normal costs, and then, then, and those are. and those are accumulated to what's called the crude liability. And then those assets you put away for that person, they accumulate. And then they're compared every year, and a gain or loss is determined, and amortization basis set up. So the, the idea really is the actuary sets the assumptions in such a way that some years there's going to be gains, and some years it's going to be lost. And on average, they cancel each other out. So that it kind of waivers around, that the, the, the contribution requirement waivers around, or, you know, waffles around, that's what I want, waffles around the normal cost. But if you have a big change, like a discount rate change, then like I said, that's, that's the main driver of liabilities. And all of a sudden, if you go from 7% to 6.5%, and for this new employee you hired, you were thinking you were going to get 7% all along, now you have a deficit to make up because now you're only going to get 6.5%. If you had assumed 6.5% from the beginning, you would have been putting away more from the beginning.
So would an actuary, if we hired a new employee today, would an actuary be assuming that the discount rate is, is dropping over time in their?
No, no, they're assuming 7%, period.
Oh, okay, that's good to know. And then my last question, this might be more of a staff question, is currently when we are using our strategic pension fund to pay down our pension, that money comes, that money is coming from the general fund. But is it true that that money, a lot of times, is, is kind of being, coming from ERAF dollars? I remember something, there being some connection, Mr. Jacobson, between ERAF dollars and surplus and pension funding. Can you just explain the relationship between, among all that?
Sure, so the city council does have a standing general fund reserve policy. So this is what sets aside reserves for a number of factors, including economic stabilization and emergency contingency. Strategic pension reserve is the last portion of it. And 25% of any surplus in a given year goes toward the strategic pension reserve. So that is really the mix of all general fund revenues over expenditures in a given year. And so it can't really be attributable to any given source. It's really the total collection of all the revenues minus all of the expenditures in the general fund. And so whatever's left over, a quarter of that is put toward the strategic pension reserve. I believe what you might be referencing is, in 2019, staff did present a report about potential strategies to lower the unfunded liabilities at a faster rate than the essentially minimum rate which CalPERS requires. And so staff plans to incorporate the excess ERAF anticipation of essentially budgeting for 100% rather than what staff had done or what the past practice had been of doing 50% in anticipation of excess ERAF going away at some point. So that was incorporated into one version of the budget for, of the city manager's proposed budget for 2019-20, but that wasn't actually what was adopted in that budget. So the city has gone back to 50% ERAF, excess ERAF expectation. And so it believes that that's the connection that you might be thinking of.
Thank you very much. That's it for me for now. Thanks, Mr. Combs, Mayor Combs.
Any other questions, advice, Mayor Nash?
Thank you. So when an employee moves to another organization that's also a CalPERS organization or comes into our organization having worked at another organization, basically, how does the accrued liability transfer between organizations or stay with an organization?
It does stay with the organization. So the service they earned at the previous organization, if they come to you with CalPERS service, CalPERS knows that, that they earn that service at a different organization. If you look in your valuation, you can actually see there's four categories of members. There's actives, there's retirees, there's terminated, and then there's transferred. So they know that, or someone leaves you and goes somewhere else. They know, so the service they have with you, that liability stays with you. And you don't pick up another agency's liability that stays with that agency as well.
And so if we have someone who's at the beginning of their career at Menlo Park, and then they go to another agency and they end up retiring somewhere else, our liability does not change at all depending, because they were here early or conversely? Is, is there any liability difference in what point in their career we, in their CalPERS career that we?
Right, so that's a tricky one. CalPERS doesn't share, I'm not a CalPERS actuary. And they don't share exactly with, with, you know, that's not in their methodology exactly how they split the liabilities between the various agencies someone's worked around. But I would think that the, the most recent agency, the one that they retire from, is probably going to have more, more, I mean, it's definitely prorated on service. You know, how many, if they had five years with you and 25 with another agency, they're going to prorate on service. It's less clear to me how they, if they take into account their first five years was with you and they're earning less, and then the next 20 years are somewhere else where they earned more. So that's a little bit unclear. They don't really disclose exactly how they do that. It'd be nice to know that, but.
That was exactly my question.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any additional questions? I think, okay, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. Just looking at the, the question that we have as far as our pension liability funding, I noticed that in the, the presentation, there wasn't a definition of the discount rate. Can you explain how, how we get to the discount rate? Since that's one of the decisions we have to make.
Okay, that would be a good, right, that would be a great addition for our presentation. So the discount rate, CalPERS employs investment managers who invest the fund. And they make decisions, how much should be in, in fixed income? How much should be in stock market? And what sectors are the stock, stock market to be in? How much should be in real estate? How much should be in cash? So those investment managers make these decisions. They, they develop an investment policy for CalPERS, and then they go out and invest the money. And then they look at, once they develop this investment policy, then they look at these capital market assumptions and make their predictions about, okay, large cap stock market, we think is going to return 8%. And fixed income, we think is going to return 5%. And we, we have money in, in real estate, that's going to return 12%. And then they weight those and come up with the overall expected rate of return over, over a very long period of time. So that's how the discount rate is set. And they're always reevaluating the discount rate based on the funding policy and how assets have performed and what the future looks like. You know, of course, we had COVID and very unusual year for returns, really unexpected, I think. I didn't expect it to turn out as it's turning out at this moment. But that's where the discount rate comes from, from the CalPERS investment manager's investment policy and future outlook of the economic state of the investments.
And how often does that change? Or does that, is that depending on what happens?
It changes, you know, we just, they just got down ramping, they just got done ramping down from seven and a half to seven over the last few years. And, you know, I think they probably are going to change it in 2022, which would mean it was about a four, it stayed, stayed the same for four years. Typically, it doesn't get, four years is a pretty good run. I wouldn't look for, it doesn't change usually every year. Or every two years. It's usually, it's studied, they look at it, watch the markets, watch how the world's developing and make new predictions. So I wouldn't expect it to change every two years or probably even every three years, four to five years. You could probably see a change.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And sort of in following up on Councilmember Taylor's line of questioning, every participant, right, in CalPERS gets to make their own assessment about whether they think that that discount rate is conservative or aggressive, and then position themselves, right, in their contributions based on their own, their own assessment, right? We, we're not beholden to that, to that assessment from CalPERS as, as regards to, to the, to the discount rate, correct?
You mean, so if you mean like some agencies we were working with, they, they've chosen to make, to fund, assuming 6.5% is the actual discount rate? Yes, you can do that. What you can't do is make less than what they're asking. Oh, we think you're going to earn 10%. You're asking us to overfund, so we're not going to do that. So, yeah, you can go ahead, and a number of agencies are doing that, assuming 6.5% is probably a more realistic target. And certainly, numbers we can help you calculate and funding on that basis. So they're putting more in than the, the minimum.
Yeah, and then so for participants, organizations, cities that participate, and so that discount rate is, is a base, right, essentially, of what, what they have to, to contribute based on.
Yeah, and this is agency-wide, it's not individuals, don't get to choose. Individuals just put in whatever, the 7% classic, Pepper members have to put in half of the normal cost. Go on, I'm sorry.
No, um, and then to, and maybe if you look over like the past, like, maybe it was, and I missed it, like the 20 or 10 years, like, what has been the average, like, sort of rate of return? Like, what, I mean, if we say like, for the past 20 years, the rate of return of Cal, CalPERS investments, and I know this goes into their, their calculation, but, but do we actually know what that, that figure is?
We, we do, and I, you know, Max, are you, that Max is my customer success person. We had a, we had that calculated. Do you remember what it is, Max? You can team me. He's not, he can't say anything at the moment.
No, totally fair. And then going on to just my, my last sort of comment to what Councilmember Willison was saying about what we get from some of the concerns for, from stakeholders and community about the, the, the staffing size. And there was this whole thing about like, sort of, when an employee starts and then, like, where then, you know, along the way, there possibly becomes a, a, a funding gap. But in theory, and I know you guys had a long discussion about that, in theory, like, if that person never gets hired, then there never is any, like, like, retirement liability on the part. And so, so there goes, like, I think the, the argument, right? And so if you're a municipality and your overall revenues stay the same, but then your staff goes from 200 to 150, then in, in theory, th- those are 50 people of which you, again, and if it's no impact on, on your overall revenue, no, it can, obviously, if then your revenue goes, goes down, this is all assuming revenue stays, stays constant and that those additional heads don't have, have an impact on, on, on revenue, which I know is not the real world, but just, just for my purposes in this moment, right? If revenue stays constant and is not necessarily tied to specific headcount, and you're able to like not have additional people, then, then of course, your, your liabilities go, in that, that regard, go down. And I think.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, and there's a little lag, obviously, where I keep interrupting people. I'm sorry about that. We'll get you that information about the, the 10-year average CalPERS return and the 20-year average. We, we have that information. I'll get it, we'll get it to you tomorrow in the morning.
Yeah, okay, totally right. Yeah, and I just know that, again, like I know with CalPERS, it's a lot, a lot more complex. Mr. Jacobson, were, were you going to add something?
Yes, Mayor Combs, just to clarify on your comment there, the unfunded liability will go down over that time period in the scenario that you outlined because it will be paid off somewhat over that timeframe. But if the city were to immediately reduce its headcount by a number, the unfunded liability would be unaffected.
Yeah, yeah, and this, at this moment, yes, like, right, it would only be like, sort of, like, the future expectation of the, the retirement liability, you, you know, that the city takes on by those people continuing to work, right? I know that, like, at that moment, from this day behind, or from this day to the past, like, all of that liability is still, is still there and doesn't, doesn't immediately go away.
Yeah, and there's, I do want to say, Mr. Jacobson, that, so if someone goes from an active employee to what we call vested term, in other words, someone, they, they leave their money with CalPERS, they're going to get a future retirement benefit. The, the crude liability measurement for that person is slightly different than it is for an active person. And there, it's possible there, there would be a little bit of a gain if they go from active status to vested term status. So do the way those, those numbers are, they're measured differently between those two classes of employees. So, okay.
Okay, yeah, and I would just add from, from my perspective, again, I like, I know, obviously, CalPERS is a lot more complex, but I don't know if you guys have heard of it, there is this, this thing called the FIRE movement, right? What is it, Financial Independence Retire Early? And so this whole idea, yeah, and so a lot of those guys, like, sort of base how much you need to build on guys and gals, on like, you know, a four or 5% sort of return, right? And so that's like, you know, a big, if they're saying four, and CalPERS, again, I know there's a lot more complexity to the CalPERS. But if they're saying that, like, you need to build up enough to where you're thinking that, like, a 4% return on that is, is going to allow you sort of not to eat into that principle too much and to have it sort of until, as long as you expect it. It just sort of seems like, again, I know that's a lot more of a, a simplistic micro-level analysis, but, but it, there is a sort of a disconnect, like, of 5%.
The FIRE movement, they're, they're being extremely conservative. They are saying, no matter what, you're, you know, you're not going to get in trouble. You know, we're going to assume a really low rate of return, just so you're doubly protected. You know, you've saved up those money and you can invest conservatively and still be financially independent. So CalPERS is not being that conservative in their investments. So that's why the higher discount rate. But yeah, I know all about the, the FIRE movement.
Cool. Any, any other questions? Mr., I'll go to Councilmember Willison. And then, Mr. Jacobson, you know, I know that essentially this was like a presentation so that, like, staff is clear that, that, that all of council is operating from at least the same set of information. But let me know if there's any specific kind of direction or information that you can give from council. And then, and Councilmember Willison, I think you wanted to, to say something.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Combs. Yeah, I'm looking at the questions that staff was kind of posing to us. And kind of jumping to the strategy, I do like the idea of the alternate discount rate. You know, 6.5 sounds good. I don't know if there's any, you know, obviously, the lower you go, you have a greater opportunity cost because then you don't have the money to do other things with. And then I don't know if there's any risk of like overfunding it, and then you lose money or whatever, but is there kind of like a sweet spot of alternate discount rate? It sounds like 6.5 is widely accepted.
It is, yeah. Most of our clients that are looking into this are using 6.5.
Okay, so to me, that makes a lot of sense.
So that, yeah, I want to go, yeah, I want to go the FIRE route and I'd go to 4%. I think, like you said, that might be excessive. And if you do overfund, and it might, you know, that'd be a buffer against some future unexpected economic events, but they may not materialize in the same way. So you might end up being overfunded for quite some time. So I think 6.5 is probably a pretty good target.
Councilmember Mueller.
Ms. Pledgie, I want to make sure I understand, what is your recommendation on it?
Well, so we, we usually, we can show you the numbers that if you value the liabilities at 6.5% and assume assets are going to earn 6.5%, we can show you what the contributions would be. And then you can make those, those funding changes, and you can put in extra money to CalPERS, or you can put it into a 115 trust. We could also look at other discount rates to show you a range of options. You know, we could show you six and a, three quarters, six and a quarter, 6% to show you how the discount rate change really affects the costs. So I guess I'm saying my recommendation is to, to look at it, to look at these various discount rates and, and see if that makes sense to you. So I guess I'm saying my recommendation is to to look at it, to look at these various discount rates and and see if that makes sense to you. But more conservatively.
Yeah, I mean, I actually lean toward funding this conservatively, but we're in pretty, we're in better shape than a lot of cities in this area, because we have been conservative. And well, actually, it's impressive. In paying down. I candidly, Mr. Jacobson, do we need to take an action tonight? Or can we take in the information, think about the information, and then return to this issue? Because it's been my experience on matters like this, with all due respect, Ms. Plegge, I like to actually stew on this information, think about it, talk about it, and then and then also, we have quite a few people in town who have a lot of opinions on it. And then make a decision.
Absolutely, yeah.
Are we okay with that, Mr. Jacobson?
So there, staff is really looking for for general direction at this point. It is something that will be incorporated into the city manager's proposed budget. So to the extent that there is, for instance, a a target ratio or preferred strategy, that would be helpful to incorporate into the budget, particularly if using a a different discount rate. It does not need to be immediate, however, so there there is still some time. However, the vast majority of the budget is prepared in the month of March. So having that information ahead of that time will allow staff to prepare the budget. Councilmember Wilson.
What would be helpful for me in terms of a funding ratio in the target date would be some trade off information. So if we funded it, if we, if our target was, you know, 90%, that had the pros of that are this, and the cons of that are this, and if you do it sooner than later, the same. And that way, we have some info to be able to make a decision.
Yes, we can, we can prepare a presentation on that basis.
Does that work for you, Mr. Jacobson?
Yes, we can work on preparing that.
And when would that, is there some sense of when we would get that back? And because you're you're saying that that like March is the the sweet spot. So would this be something that would come back before before March?
We could do this before March. I think, Mr. Jacobson, you have an idea, we should get together, you and I, Max, and talk about this and and outline exactly what you would like us to present.
We can also prepare this as sort of a a budget enhancement, as sort of a different scenario in the budget that could either be included or not included and prepare the budget in that manner.
And and that would be the the 6.5, great.
That seems to be the direction I'm hearing, yes.
Okay, yeah, so so you'll do a seven and you'll you'll do a 6.5. Any other comments, questions, directions? Councilmember Mueller.
I want to make sure I understand. When you say do a seven and do a 6.5, the seven, can you refresh my memory? And I'm embarrassed to say, isn't the seven a lesser payoff rate than a 6.5?
The 7%? Go ahead, sorry.
So the seven is essentially the the baseline expectation, that is, the the CalPERS requirement. And then a 6.5 would be paying it down more aggressively than CalPERS requires.
So I'd like to see a seven, a 6.5, and then six.
And the reason why is because, and I think, well, I think the pandemic's put a bit of uncertainty into the marketplace, and I think being conservative right now is actually not a bad, not a bad thing. So something, at least something to consider.
Okay.
I have no no objection to that. Okay, cool. Well, I think if that that's everything, then then I think I think that that brings it into this agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Plegge and Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all. Bye bye.
All right, well, I was going to, before we move into regular session, to take a bio break, do any any objection to that? Does that all sound good? Okay, so let's let's take a a five minute bio bio break, so we turn it at around 6:05. Councilmember Mueller.
Can I ask, would anyone be considered actually just taking our dinner break right now?
I I don't have any objection to that, but I just want to bring the, if if there's no objection from the council members, and if that that's okay with the the city manager. As as far as like staff.
Absolutely fine, yes.
Okay, and so in our 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 dinner break, is it, what is it, is 20, 25 minutes?
22 and a half, yeah.
Okay, so let's do, let's do 6:25. We're back.
Mayor Combs, please disengage all webcams and microphones and only engage your webcams when you return. Thank you.
Welcome back. This time, having all city council members return to our virtual base, Mayor Combs, you may reconvene. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, we'll dive into regular session, and Item D will have a report out from closed session by the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor Combs and city council members. I'm here tonight to report out on two agenda items from Friday's closed session. In the first action, the city council, and I believe it was a motion by Jen Willison and a second by Betsy Nash, voted to approve pursuing a contract with Nira Doherty of Burke Williams Law and her firm. And so that was passed on a three to zero, a three to two vote. My apologies. In the second action, the city council and I mutually agreed to extend the city manager contract for an additional year, and that was, I believe, motion by Mueller and a second by Combs, and that passed on a five-zero vote. No modifications to the contract.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Jerome Robinson, for the report out on the second item. Thank you for reupping the final year of your contract. I know, I think I speak for most of the council when we are enormously grateful. I know that taking on this position initially out of retirement was something of a sacrifice, and so we appreciate that you're going to, you know, see the city through to what we're all hoping will be the end of the pandemic. On the first item, I'll say that, you know, I'll say I strongly disagree with the council majority's decision to sever the city's relationship with the Jorgensen firm and to not appoint the interim city attorney into the vision on a permanent basis. But of course, it is something that will be agendized as part of regular business, and at that time, there will be a full discussion by the council on that item. I was going to ask if there is anything anyone wants to add, Councilmember Mueller?
I just would indicate I support the mayor's position on that and look forward to the discussion when it's fully agendized. I'm also in agreement with the mayor's position on that.
With that, if there's no additional comments, we'll move on to public comment. And so, agenda item A, under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general direction. With that, I'll call City Clerk Karen to call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, please engage that hand, each one from the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone. You may address the city council at this time. Our first speaker will be Kathleen Daly. Kathleen, would you like to unmute yourself? You may address the city council at this time.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Combs, council members Mueller, Nash, Taylor, and Wilson, and of course, city staff. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I also want to thank Mayor Combs for his eloquent proclamation for Catherine Stroll, for the comments from both council members at the last council meeting, and the brilliant piece in the almanac by writer Kate Bradshaw, Menlo Park Lost a Dear Friend. Catherine Stroll was a fierce supporter of everything Menlo Park, a lover of the neighborhood known as the Willows, and a truly beautiful soul with her eyes always on what's best, good in the world, and what truly matters. In conversation with a number of her friends, including Pam Jones, Denise Carter, Mickey Winkler, and Catherine's wonderful husband, Bill Dempsey, I'm asking you tonight to allow us a way to honor her. The idea is to place a bench in the Willow Oaks Park in honor of Catherine. Many of us had the joy of walking through the willows with Catherine, stopping in Willow Oaks Park along the way to watch the children play, the dogs wrestle, the joggers go by, and the families just enjoy its beauty. Many of us had the privilege and joy of spending a few minutes or hours talking and taking in all of life in 2020, the good, the not-so-good, the really bad, and the countdown to 2021 with her. We all, including all of you, want to be able to go sit on the park bench and remember our beautiful friend. I know finances are tight with all of what has transpired over the last year, so I will initiate and oversee a private fundraiser for this purchase. We have been in contact with the appropriate vendor that the city works with on all the other benches. We have some ideas to keep this very simple for staff. As for aesthetics, I will admit to chuckling at the idea of asking you for a neon pink bench, but then Bill suggested red. The vendor the city uses has a brilliant fire-armed red, which you all know would scream, "So Catherine, she looks so amazing in red." So long as the bench truly represents the incredible person we are missing dearly, her loved ones and I are willing to compromise and work closely with city staff to make this idea a reality. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter will be Kim Novello. Kim, would you like to unmute yourself? You may address the city council at this time.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, mayor and council members. I am here tonight because I am very concerned about the mental health, sorry, mental health and physical health effects of urban living. I am concerned about the building that is taking place, not only in Menlo Park, but along the entire San Francisco but along the entire San Francisco Peninsula. I grew up here, have been here for over 40 years, and I am concerned. I do not believe, I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought, but I wanted to, I'm going to read an appeal from the Ninth Circuit, the majority, part of the majority opinion in the case Juliana versus United States. "In the mid-1960s, the popular song warned that we were on the eve of destruction. The plaintiffs in this case have presented compelling evidence that climate change has brought that eve nearer. A substantial evidentiary record documents that the federal government has long promoted fossil fuel use despite knowing that it can cause catastrophic climate change and that failure to change existing policy may hasten environmental apocalypse. In this case, 21 children in Oregon are suing the federal government. Unfortunately, in this case, the court decided in a very difficult 2-1 decision that, as a court, it could not require the government to develop a plan to phase out fossil fuel emissions and draw down excess atmospheric CO2. Such relief, it concluded, it said reluctantly, is beyond their constitutional power. Rather, the plaintiff's impressive case for redress must be presented to the political branches of government." I'm reading this information from this Ninth Circuit case because not only am I concerned about the effects of the fossil fuel emissions, but I am also concerned about the mental health and physical health effects of urban living. I don't have the substantial evidence with me tonight, but I do believe that any more construction being done needs to be evaluated, and perhaps we need a health and welfare commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the last call for any public comment for an item not on the agenda. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you, Ms. Novello and Ms. Daly for your public comments. With that, we'll turn to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. We'll first turn to and see if we have any public comment on the consent calendar. City Clerk Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our consent calendar, items F1 through F2, I mean, city council, minutes, investment portfolio, the crosstown shuttle, the grant funding for California Drought Water Parks Climate Protection and our access for all Act of 2018, and the extension with Tim Sheeper for operation of Burgess Pool. Please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. This will be the last call for any public comment on the consent calendar, items F1 through F5. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you. So with that, we'll turn it to the virtual days. Is there any additional questions on consent calendar items? Any desire to pull an item from the consent calendar to discuss separately? Councilmember Taylor.
On item F3, I would like a friendly amendment to item F3. And then F5, I have just actually two questions.
Okay. Do you want to start off with the F3? Or however you want to go, if you want to start off with F5?
F3. What the, thank you, Mayor Combs. With the friendly amendment to adopt a resolution 6614, supporting the city's crosstown shuttle for application for the lifeline transportation program. The friendly amendment is if staff could review the hours and frequency to make sure it's serving the residents.
Okay. Is there someone from staff who wants to pop on? Ms. Nagaya, the Public Works Director?
Good evening, Mayor Combs, council members. Thank you, Mayor Taylor, for the question. So I think we can definitely do that as part of our ongoing work to oversee the shuttle program. So thank you for speaking earlier today, Councilmember Taylor. That helps us be ready to answer questions. So we will, we can take that direction and fold it into the program.
Thank you.
Now, F5.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. My question on F5. Trying to fold this into two questions. So just looking at the service of our pool service and looking at the fact that one of our pools will be closed in the summer, and think looking at the usage. So, and I'm not sure if Mr. Reinhardt is here, but just trying to get, dig a little deeper and address some concerns by the residents as far as usage. Is it possible for this pool to be sustainable if we are not prioritizing pool rentals by teams so that more time can be spent for family swim? Also, there were some concerns around the rates that now, because of the COVID guidelines, less people are in the pool at one time, which means that the rates go up. And so we're getting more people that are able to pay the new rates, because I think it's a little bit more expensive than what it was a year ago. And so you get a lot of people that are not able to spend the same amount of money, the increase as far as to use a pool. So I'm just, would like to just talk a little bit about if it's possible to really look at how to make the pool usage about the residents and Menlo Park's needs as opposed to, I know it's a, it needs to make a certain amount of money to function, but I'm looking at city services. And so those are a couple of the concerns that were brought to me, and also it was posted on CCN as well.
Thank you for those comments and questions. Councilmember Taylor, I'll turn it to Sean Reinhardt, who is Library and Community Services Director. Please correct me if I get your titles wrong.
That's accurate, Mayor. Thank you, and thank you for the question, Councilmember Taylor. And it's a good question. And to answer it, yes, it is absolutely, it's possible to explore ways and what it would take to keep rates lower and to provide more sort of unstructured, open swim access at the Burgess Pool during summer, which I, or starting in the summer when the Bell Haven Pool closes, which I think is the timeframe you referred to. It certainly would take some study and some analysis and working with the current operator and bringing back some of that analysis to the council at a future time, perhaps in the context of the discussions around reactivating other department services and analyzing what the future of aquatic service delivery looks like in the post-COVID world that we hope to enter soon, later this year, as well as in preparation for the Menlo Park community campus. So I hope that that kind of helps to respond to your immediate question about is there something can be done? And what would it take to look into that? So the answer is yes, and we certainly can.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. I have a follow-up question, Mayor Combs. And that is, what would that look like if we're looking at a contract extension now with Mr. Sheper? So how does the research that you will do for the, around city services with the pool, how does that impact the current contract that's in front of us now?
Well, what's before you with this item tonight is simply surfacing for the council's attention that absent any action by either party, either the city through the city council or the operator, which is Team Sheper, to terminate the contract, then the contract would just automatically roll forward as of August 31st of this year for an additional 12 months. However, at any time, either party could attempt to initiate negotiations to renegotiate a new contract or implement the termination clause in the contract. However, there would be sort of different specifications according to the contract that would sort of flow from that. So there certainly are options available. And they don't preclude conversations about what it might take in doing that analysis, even if the contract, you know, if no action was taken tonight in the contract, which is to kind of roll forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was any additional questions, Councilmember Taylor?
No, that was all. Thank you.
Were there any, and are you comfortable keeping this in the consent, within the consent calendar for now?
I have a follow-up question. Would there need to be a friendly amendment to what's on F5 in order to include that? Or is that automatic of what staff will do?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Councilmember and councilmembers, we certainly could just take that as direction from the council to the staff along with this item, which is one of the reasons we did want to surface it for your attention in case you did have additional direction like that to provide at this time. So we could certainly just take it as direction and follow up and act on it accordingly.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Councilmember Taylor. I know we've all seen the emails with concern about the overall availability of the pools for just general public use. Are there any other items within the consent calendar that someone wants to have additional questions about? Or obviously also entertain a motion anytime. Vice Mayor Nash?
Thank you. Just sort of following up on, with the pool operations, I think that it is, at this point, given that we're in the COVID scenario where we can only have one swimmer per lane, and there's a lot of restrictions, and also because the Burgess Pool, I'm sorry, the Bell Haven Pool will be going offline for the MPCC construction. I just want to put out there that I agree that there are some, I would like to see more time devoted to residents and open swimming, if that is possible. But I'm very interested in actually just continuing with this contract because I think it's not a good time for anyone to to change with, to make great changes to the pool and the structure at this point. So I guess I would be very interested in talking with Councilmember Taylor and with Mr. Reinhardt and about possibilities once we're out of the pandemic. But at this point, I would strongly recommend that we continue, as I believe we are doing, with the contract.
Thank you for those comments. Vice Mayor Nash? Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion from Councilmember Taylor to approve consent calendar. I'll second.
So I have a motion before by City Councilmember Taylor, a second by Mayor Combs to approve the consent calendar. It does include the minutes that were provided on the virtual days, the direction provided on items F3 and F5. Any further discussion or questions from the city council? Seeing none by whole call votes, City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Willison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes without. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, we'll turn to the public hearing portion of the meeting. This public hearing is a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. The item under the public hearing is G1, Adoption, Adopt Resolution Number 6613 to Establish a Proposed News Rack Permit, to Establish the Proposed News Rack Permit Fees. With that, I will turn it over to the staff report presentation from Junior Engineer Scott Jaugh. If you're talking, we can't hear you.
Thank you for that. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Scott Jaugh. I'm a junior engineer with the Utilities Division, and I will be giving the presentation tonight on the proposed news rack permit fees. Can you see the presentation?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Scott.
Okay. So the objective tonight is to conduct a public hearing on the proposed news rack permit fees. Sorry about that. Let me just move this. And these fees are required by California Government Code when enacting new fees. And the next objective is to adopt Resolution Number 6613 to establish news rack permit fees. Fees adopted by resolution go into effect immediately. Little bit of background on the news rack ordinance. So the 1980s, publishers and the Chamber of Commerce, they collaborated and installed and purchased green, many of the green racks that you see around the city. However, there was no agreement on who would maintain these news racks. In October 25th, 2017, there was a community meeting held to solicit feedback and recommendations on the news rack ordinance. Then a few months later, these, the feedback was brought to council, and council gave direction for staff to draft an ordinance. On March 3rd, 2018, the news rack ordinance was introduced with a few amendments to be made. And then there was a bit of a delay, but on June 16, 2020, the first reading of the news rack ordinance was adopted with a delayed implementation. And on January 1st of this year, the ordinance became effective, which brings us to the council meeting today where we'll be adopting the news rack permit fees. This is one of the last steps to fully implement our news rack ordinance. So we can go into the proposed news rack fees. These fees are based on the estimated time to perform tasks by the appropriate staff position. So some of the tasks are reviewing the applications for the permits and performing inspections. And if you look at Attachment E, it'll provide more details on all of these estimates. And staff recommend low-cost recovery for permitting fees and full cost recovery for non-compliance fees. So if you look at the table below, the numbers that are in bold are the fees that are being recommended by staff for tonight. So I wanted to provide some recent feedback on the fees. So after the staff report was published on Thursday, we had a few interactions, which I feel are relevant to the public hearing tonight. One interaction was via phone call, and we asked this publisher their opinion and we asked this publisher their opinion on the fees. And they felt that the two-year permit fee was a little bit high, but overall it seems fair. And they compared it to the City of San Francisco, which has a permit fee of $50 per year. So that would make a two-year fee of 100 compared to our 79. But the City of San Francisco does provide maintenance of all permitted news racks. And the other feedback, many of the council members are probably aware of this. But I could just summarize. So this publisher felt that the permit fee of $79 per rack would be a huge hit to local newspapers during this time when they are struggling to survive. And they brought up that most cities in our area do not charge a fee for news rack permits, which is true. And they requested that council consider suspending fees for at least a year. And then I just want to provide some general updates of important things that happened since the last council meeting. So April 30th, this is an important date because this would be the end of the grace period, which we've given to all existing news racks to meet compliance standards and submit permit applications. So the news rack ordinance became effective in January. And then shortly after this, we sent an email to all publishers, distributors, interested parties, and letting them know that the news rack permit applications are available. And so the city wanted to give them at least 90 days to gather all of the required documents in order to submit a permit application. And also during the last city council meeting, a big topic was removing the abandoned news racks. So the council felt that we should immediately remove any non-compliant news racks. So I'm sorry to report, but to date that no news racks have been removed. But staff feel that after April 30th, we will truly have a complete picture of all the news racks in Menlo Park. And then we could really start to remove any abandoned, non-compliant news racks. So just wanted to remind the council of the action requested tonight to conduct a public hearing on the proposed news rack permit fees and adopt Resolution Number 6613 to Establish News Rack Permit Fees. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Jaugh. So let's let's go to public comment. And I'll ask the the City Clerk to call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. We will be opening the public hearing to public comment. For any member of the public who wishes to speak on item G1, Adopt Resolution Number 6613 to Establish the Proposed News Rack Permit Fees, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone. You may address the city council at this time. Our first public commenter will be William Johnson. If you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Thank you. I'm Bill Johnson. I'm the publisher of The Almanac and the Palo Alto Weekly, president of Embarcadero Media. I appreciate all the time and effort that you and the staff have put into this issue over the last many years. We are in complete agreement with the objectives of this ordinance, participated in some of the early meetings that resulted in the ordinance being written. So in terms of its objectives, which are to get ugly news racks out of the city, get the abandoned ones cleared out, and to bring some order to this situation, we're in total agreement. However, I think the burdens of this permit system that has been created are pretty severe, both on the staff and on local publishers. I just want to give you an example of how it impacts our papers. We have 68 news racks in Menlo Park, 35 for The Almanac and 33 for the Palo Alto Weekly. At the cost that's being proposed, that would be over $5,000 for our company to maintain those racks. The staff analysis says that for every rack that's permitted, it takes two hours of staff time. That means that because we have 68 racks, that's 136 person hours of staff time that's being attributed to news racks that we already have in the city that comply with this ordinance. But more important, I'd just like to point out that you can accomplish everything that needs to be done to clean up this news rack situation without the permit system and counter no staff effort other than responding to complaints about news racks that are not in compliance. If you keep in the penalty fees for non-complying racks at full cost recovery and do away with the permit fees entirely for racks that are in existence, you can accomplish everything you want. So I would I would urge you to think about just eliminating the whole permit system, maintaining those cost recovery fees for those violators of your policies that have been set up in the ordinance, and go forward for at least a year and see if that remedies the problem. In the alternative, if you're not prepared to 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 eliminate that permit system, I would really urge you to defer the permits for publishers for at least a year to unburden us with yet another cost at a time where, like all small businesses, we're struggling to get through this pandemic. So I appreciate your time and efforts on this and wish you good luck. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing regarding the proposed news rack permit fees. And G1. And seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs. They close the public hearing.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So I'll quick kick it off with a sort of a clarifying question for Mr. Jaugh. You had said that no news racks have been removed. But it's it's my understanding that there there actually have been a bunch, or at least some removed throughout the city, not necessarily by by obviously city staff. But it's my understanding that some news racks were removed and have been removed in Bell Haven. I know that right down the the street from my house on Gilbert, there was a couple of kind of abandoned news racks that have been removed. And so it was just, so there seems to be some news racks that have been removed. Do you guys have some, if the city is is not the person who removed them? But do you guys have any sense of of who's been removing some of the racks? Is it is it these publishers that that are now aware of of the this this permitting structure that's coming into place?
Yeah, so actually, I'm not aware of the city removing any of the news racks. And I'm not sure who removed those news racks that you're talking about.
Okay. Any additional clarifying questions? As I say, we can sort of see the extent to which there are there are clarifying questions for for Mr. Jaugh and then sort of dive into a discussion about what direction the council wants to go in. Councilmember Wilson?
Can you explain kind of the need for the permits from staff's perspective versus not having permits and and following the public commenters kind of suggestion of just having it be reporting racks out of compliance?
Yes, thanks for your question. We feel that the permit system, we basically have a unique permit number for every news rack in Menlo Park. So if we were to receive a complaint, they could just say, okay, this news rack number, like 11, for example. And then we would know exactly which news racket is and where it is. And then we could take immediate action. And we would have all of the contact information on file. And we just feel like it would basically help inventory all of the news racks throughout the city. Yes.
And is it, and I'll go to, it just is a quick, and in that situation, Mr. Jaugh, right? If there, if you see a news rack without a permit, you can immediately remove it, right?
That's correct. Yeah, we would have a a clear permit sticker which would be affixed to the lower right corner of all news racks. And so it would be very clear to identify which news racks do not have a permit.
Yeah. Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And can you address the public commenters assessment of the number of staff hours estimated to go into this permitting effort? Because it does seem like 136 hours. Can you just explain what goes into that? So we have a better idea of of the staff's work.
Sure. So if you have attachment E, it kind of provides a breakdown. So a an applicant would submit an application online. And then we calculated about 15 minutes, so 0.25 hours of text time to just open the application, make sure that all the requested and required documents are there. And then entering any contact information into other spreadsheet. So that's kind of intake. And then to review the application. So to look at all of the attachments and maybe look at some Google Street views or aerials to make sure that of the area, if it's appropriate. And then just to coordinate back and forth with the applicant. So if they need other required documents, they would send email and handle all of that. So that's that's included in the 0.75 hours. And then after the application has been kind of approved, then we would have a final inspection by a construction inspector. And so that includes about half hour of travel time. And then to actually inspect the news rack and make sure that it meets compliance and then affix the permit sticker and then the identifying information sticker.
Mayor Combs, can I ask a follow up?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, so in the case of Embarcadero Media, where they have 68 racks, it seems like there could be huge economies of scale with a lot of those tasks. And I'm just wondering if if staff has considered like bundling some of these efforts? And if that a fee per supplier of media?
We have not considered that. But that is a good suggestion. And we can certainly consider that. Yeah, because if if we're inspecting maybe a group of news racks at one time, right? We wouldn't have to travel there and back each time. So we can certainly look at that.
Ms. Nagaya?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Combs. And thank you for the the question so so far. I think I just wanted to also note that by establishing the framework for the fees that's proposed tonight, this is also meant to be something that would kind of carry us into the future with with future permitting requests that that might come in after this initial batch is established. And so I think there there may be some opportunities, certainly to streamline you know, applications in this first batch and then the the annual renewal or the bi-annual renewal process in the future. But the the framework that was provided was also meant to capture like a one-off permit in the future that that might be coming in individually. So these are averages that that are proposed in terms of the the fee framework. But there may be some options, certainly to to look for discounts for publishers that have a lot of racks in the city or additionally looking at either a lower cost recovery level for the initial permits or looking at deferring fees altogether at the the council's discretion. So so we're happy to to take your feedback on on any of those options. We just want to be able to put some sort of structure in place so that we can keep on track with with the removals of the abandoned racks throughout the city.
Yeah, thank you for those comments, Ms. Nagaya. I'll just quickly add some of my own thinking. Yeah, I see the permitting structure and the permit fees as as separate discussions. And for me, the permitting structure is something I'm fairly committed to. And it's it's been a long discussion over several iterations of city council and in response to what has been, again, like public complaints about abandoned news racks. And and I would be leery of of sort of reopening that sort of that approach for some different sort of structure. But we can't have a discussion, I mean, I'm just saying for me, I am willing to have a discussion about about fees, right, at this particular time, like what what those those look like. Councilmember Wilson and then Councilmember Mueller?
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya and Mayor Combs. Yeah, I I would definitely see kind of this as almost two separate, well, I guess three, if you're looking at renewals. But this like initial transition to a permitting system and kind of a grandfathering of existing kind of news racks in terms of their fees and not, you know, penalizing people who have been providing a vital service in our community of giving information that we all desperately need. And so I see this initial transition as one thing to look at. And then the ongoing permitting and then the ongoing renewal. So I'm I'm very sympathetic to either lowering fees or waiving fees or some kind of initial thing and then looking at the other stuff. But those are, I'll stop talking so other council members can share their thoughts. Thanks.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I actually I actually, in this circumstance, have really have some concerns beyond just the fact that they do a public service. So within the First Amendment, first newspapers are protected First Amendment speech. And jurisdictions have the right, obviously, to put fees in place for facilities. However, during a pandemic, if those fees reach a threshold such that it's inhibiting the ability of that newspaper entity to actually deliver that 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 speech, I actually think that rises to the level of a prior restraint. If you can, in the middle of a pandemic, when all newspapers are threatened and cutting back the days upon which that they deliver their newspapers already because of economic circumstance and their ability to actually communicate with the public what is happening in government and in and in current events around them, and even to first part of the ride, political editorial. And then a jurisdiction steps forward and says, well, right now, when everything's already looking a bit shabby because of the pandemic, we're going to charge you extra. And 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 if you can't pay it, sorry, we're going to take away the rack. I think that's a prior restraint. In good times, if that was a nominal amount, I don't think it would. Then there's obviously a balancing test. But when it actually gets to the level that it's affecting the ability to conduct business of that newspaper, then I become concerned about that. And I think it's it's a it's a a prohibition against freedom of speech. And so so and I and I realize a city attorney may disagree with that interpretation. I also think a court may disagree with that. A court, depending upon who your judge is, may disagree with that interpretation. But I think there's also attorneys and judges who would absolutely agree with that interpretation. The First Amendment is is highly litigated. But the fact of the matter is, whether or not that balancing test met it, was met or not, what is balancing test met it, was met or not, what is, what is affected in that discussion is what the underlying, what the underlying fabric of the law is. And that is that we don't want to, we don't want to cut against the grain of these, of these, these, these businesses, because they are businesses, to deliver this speech to the public. And we know that our newspapers are cutting back. We see that our newspapers are asking, actually asking the public for donations to continue to operate. We see that our newspapers are cutting the days in which they deliver this speech. And I, I, I don't want to be a part of, of imposing those fees at this time. And in terms of how we impose those fees going forward, I would say that we would look at that in the future and revisit it after the pandemic to see what that appropriating balancing test is. But the way I look at this is very much akin to how, if we're going to be doing these racks at this time, I think we eat the cost. And we say, okay, we're going to eat the cost on this. This is an aesthetic improvement toward downtown at a time when I can't imagine that we would be charging other businesses in the downtown for aesthetic improvements presently. And I don't think we would go to any business downtown right now and say, hey, only up the dough. We want it to look nicer in front of your place. Because we're right now, we're, we're spending money to try to, to try to make those businesses be able to operate. So when you put all of that together, I think there's just absolutely no way I want to impose permit fees at this time. Later on, we can have a discussion on it, but just my personal preference is I really don't like imposing fees on entities that are involved in something as constitutionally protected and as, as vital to what these, these entities are doing for our public, especially because even before the pandemic started, our newspapers were struggling. So, and that's why I traditionally on this topic been pretty conservative about wanting to, to move forward until we absolutely knew where those locations were that were being implemented. And now that we're there, I see this really as a, a city aesthetic, aesthetic issue for our downtown. Because most of the news racks that we're looking to get rid of have been abandoned. They were from other businesses. And so in a sense, this, this action tonight would be imposing a fee on those who are still in business or the negative actions of other businesses who have left. And the end result would be an impact on the speech that is being delivered to the public as a benefit, as a constitutionally protected speech. So I'll get off, I'll get off my soapbox now and pass it all back to you guys. But this issue is very important to me. I did a lot of work on prior restraints and First Amendment in my early years as an attorney and do not, very much just don't want to go near it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I, I saw the interim city attorney come on. And then if, if you don't want to, if you had something you wanted to add, then, then please do. But, but if not, I, I know that Councilmember Mueller started off with a legal argument, but he said even, I think his argument wasn't just solely based on, on a legal analysis. But, but again.
Right. The only thing that I would add, I, I think the prior restraint issue is, is an interesting one, especially in light of the, the pandemic and, and those local circumstances. However, we are, you know, granting exclusive use of the portion of the city right of way. And I think that that would factor into a prior restraint analysis. And one suggestion, if, if you did want to, you know, honor some of, some of the arguments would be to have a hardship waiver. And certainly in pandemic times, you know, newspapers could, could make the findings that, you know, a, a renewal under these circumstances would pose an economic hardship. And, but obviously you could also just choose to waive the fees altogether.
Thank you for those, those comments. And city attorney Silver. I, I will say, sort of a little bit piggybacking on, on Councilmember Mueller's argument, not, not that I'm, I, I'm necessarily making a, a prior restraint argument. I don't know. I don't, I don't have the, the legal knowledge or background to make such an argument. But, you, you know, I would say that a number of cities, communities, Menlo Park size, don't actually even have a local newspaper. They, even on the peninsula, you, you would look at a number of cities that, that, that don't. And so, and so it is, I think, speaking to the, the position that the newspaper industry in, in general, it is not sort of, you know, just sort of this, this, this argument, this full argument of, of doom. Because like, in reality, like a number of them have, have gone out of, out of business. And, and there are, again, not a lot of communities, Menlo Park's size, that, that have like a, a sort of a dedicated newspaper. Anyone want to add additional comments, start providing direction specifically or formulating a, a, a motion? Vice Mayor Nash?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I agree with all the comments about the concern about fees. And I guess a little bit of nuance on that is I would be interested in possibly waiving fees, the initial fees for current racks. I don't want people to, well, I don't know if, since they haven't added one now, but I, I would just be concerned about more racks coming into the city where we have existing racks, if we didn't have fees. But I don't know if that's actually, now that I'm saying it out loud, a valid concern. But I also wanted to say that if we were to somehow distinguish between existing racks and new racks, that I would like to have some sort of waiver process where if there isn't an existing, if there, there's some areas of the city where we definitely would like to encourage people to put newspapers and so that there would be some sort of ability to waive fees if you're putting a newspaper in an area which is devoid of them right now. So to encourage newspapers in Bellhaven and as you were seeing in the Willows, and I don't know where else, that might be something that we'd want to actually encourage. So thinking about waiving fees there.
Thank you for those comments, Vice Mayor Nash. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I have a question. I didn't see this in the staff report. If there was a map of where all the newspaper stands are, if that was identified, I thought that was a discussion the last time this was on our agenda. So one question, what I would like to see is an equal distribution of newspapers citywide. I know that there are more newspapers concentrated downtown, which makes a lot of sense. But it's possible that some of those newspapers or advertisements would be useful in other areas of the city. My question directly for, I think it was, I can't remember who presented on staff. But I had, just have a question of, so the newspaper racks disappeared on the corner of Hamilton and Willow. I found out today what happened, but I'm just curious as, was it ever reported? Did anybody know? Did, was I the only one that noticed it? I doubt it. But one of the reasons why they were removed was to do some maintenance to the property. They weren't returned because of the condition they were in. So that was what was shared with me this afternoon.
Ms. Nagaya.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. So I think being in the neighborhood, I, I had seen that the, the news racks had been picked up, but the, our crews did not do so. And so we had only assumed that it was a private, either the operator of the, the publisher or the operator of the rack and, or the property owner that had, had moved them. But I, I think in general, as Mr. Ja said earlier, the, the city crews have not removed any of the, the racks that, that we think are abandoned. In the prior council hearings, when you adopted the ordinance, we had identified two locations that we've been able to confirm are fully abandoned. But until that permitting system is in place, the, the other locations are not able to be fully clear that they are, they are abandoned. So we, we have kind of an inkling that, that ones may be, but until that notification process goes, works its way through the permitting review, we didn't want to infringe on any, any free speech rights by removing racks that were, were actually being used for some sort of circulation.
Thank you.
Um, I, I'll just sort of share like what I'm looking at or how I'm thinking. I, I would be supportive of, of, you know, implementing the permitting structure and, and waiving the fees entirely for, for a year and to be revisited by, by council. I think that that sort of is a clean way that, that addresses, you know, some of, some, some of the concern. I do think, again, like, I do think at, at one point, it will, it will be immensely value, again, to, to Councilmember Mueller's point is about aesthetics, but it will be immensely value to have a permitting structure where each rack has to have a permitting, a tag. And, and so that's the issue, that the ability to, to, to mandate that news racks have a tag, which means that they can clearly be identified as being abandoned, or not, you know, not having been put in place under the, the right sort of permitting structure and thereby can be removed. And so we get that, and I think we get that value. But, but then we don't, we so, we, we, we get to not have the hit to, to local publishers, especially during the pandemic, of which there may be some concern. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah. So there is the logistical puzzle. If we, if we implement this year but not charge for it, then the first year would be, would essentially be a council, a council funded permit system. Because for implementing, for this first year, money would come out of city funds to go ahead and permit all racks. And so there's going to be a charge associated with that to the city. But then the subsequent following years, any new racks that were identified that would need a permit, obviously that fee would be lower. And so it may be that in the next year, when we look at the the actual implementation of fees, that the hit to the, our local newspapers will be small enough that then what we're talking about in a fee system is what is the barrier to entry for a new newspaper? And how do we address that in the system such that it's not what I would be concerned, the prior restraint for a new newspaper to start up. But I would be supportive of, of implementing the fee system if we were to eat the cost this year of going ahead and doing, during the permitting of those existing racks. And then we can revisit that next year. But in that way, I think that there's, I think, I think that we're moving the ball forward on the system. We're addressing what would be a question later for the council in terms of how much is appropriate to charge all of these newspapers. And we would basically be saying, look, similar to what we do every year in the, in the process where we do community grants. I mean, we have a process where we look at all sorts of nonprofits and whatnot, and we do community grants. This would almost be akin to that for our newspaper industry during this time period of the pandemic. And I think that's absolutely actually appropriate, that what, what we're, that we're putting a system in place and making a grant like that. And then in the next year, we'll go ahead and figure out what the permitting system looks like and what that ongoing hit is to the newspapers. So with that, I'll be quiet again.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I'm supportive of Mayor Combs, your suggestion. And what I also like is that by waiving the fee, but having people go through the process of registering, is that will, in a year from now, we'll actually have a full picture of where the racks are and what's current and everything. If I, if I'm understanding correctly, Ms. Nagaya. So that might help inform our decision in a year.
Thank you for the, those comments, Councilmember Wilson. So, so Ms. Nagaya, there, there seems to be a consensus, although we're not, I'm not committing anyone yet. But what is staff's reaction to that? So essentially what we're saying is, is we're okay with this, this sort of community structure or infrastructure, but we want to, to waive the fees. What, what are, what are we missing in that, in, in, in that conclusion?
Yeah, yeah. No, that, I think that, that all makes sense. We're, we're tracking, I think, the direction that, that it appears that you are headed in tonight. So I think just one clarifying question to, to start, and then I think we can follow up with, with a little bit more specificity just around the, so there are a couple fee categories that were proposed tonight for, for new permits, for renewals after this initial two-year period. And then there were also fees for impound disposal and removal of abandoned racks. And so what it might suggest, based on what we heard tonight, if, if this is the direction you want to take, is waiving the new permit fees for this first round. And then putting in place the structure for renewals or the impound disposal removal fees. And then what we can do is revisit that annually through the adoption of the city's master fee schedule. That's where these, these would live. And so you will see this on an annual or biannual basis, is that fee schedule comes before you each spring typically for implementation on July 1. So I think with the feedback we hear tonight, we could plug into the master fee schedule for the upcoming fiscal year, starting July 1 of 2021, a, a new permit fee of $0 and then revisit that in, in spring of 2022 for the following, following year. Does that align with what, what you've been thinking so far?
That, that works for me. I'll go to Councilmember Mueller, but one quick, I mean, with regards to the sort of the fee connected to removal and abandonment, like, are you really going to get those fees? I mean, like, who, who are those companies? Like, I mean, they probably have gone out of business. And, and so, so it's, so I sort of, I sort of saw that, I saw that. And I was like, well, that's a wash. That's like a Christmas list. But, but.
And in this first, first wave, I, I think you're probably right, that if we can't find the publisher in order to maintain the rack, there's a very unlikely chance that we'll be able to recoup those, those disposal fees. But as, as we kind of set up the framework over time, and we eventually have contact information and registration through a permit system, having that fee structure in place for those, those disposal fees would be, would, would be helpful in the future. So understood, but in the near term.
Okay, totally fair. And, and yeah, I, I'm supportive of what, what you, you laid out. Councilmember Mueller.
So I, I can go ahead and join the council in supporting that this tonight. But I'd like to add one friendly amendment, and that would be to the city attorney to develop a fee waiver, a fee waiver process with, with set guidelines for, for the renewal fee. So if a council in the future is of a different mindset and wants to start imposing the fees, that there would be a process already preset on what, what standards would be required to make a, make a, an application for a waiver.
I have no objection to that. I don't know that anyone actually made a motion. So, so do you want that to be a motion? It's not a friendly amendment. It's just.
I'd like that to be in the motion. I don't need to make the motion on the item. So, but I'd like that to be in the, I mean, I also, I'll, I'll, how about I start the motion? I'll waive, I'll, I'll make the motion. We waive the permit fees this year, that the implementation of the permitting begin this year, that a waiver process be developed by the. that a waiver process be developed by the city attorney to be included for renewals and for permit origination in the future, past this year, and that the council will take the implementation of permit fees two years from now in the fee renewal, in the public fees renewal, or public fees setting meeting, public fees setting meeting. Is that captured?
Yeah, I think also, the only thing is that in the fees for abandoned removal will go into effect this year too. Maybe you said that, and I missed it.
That's fine. That's great.
Yeah, okay, so that's the motion. Do we have a second? Well, I'll second it.
One moment. More in the motion. And just for clarification, City Councilmember Mueller, you had said implement fees in two years. Is that two years from the date of?
No, I didn't say that we're implementing the fees in two years. I'm saying we'll revisit the issue of implementation of fees and the fee setting process two years from now.
With the master fee.
With the master fee schedule, right.
Thank you so much.
But it's not a fait accompli that it's going to happen two years from now.
Okay, so I will repeat the motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller. The second, Mayor Combs. It is to waive permit fees this year, the exception of renewals, impound, and disposal. Implementation of the permitting begins this year. Direct the city attorney to develop a fee waiver guidelines for current and future fees. And revisit implementation permit fees with the master fees.
Karen, I think in the first portion, the fees for this year was for impound and removal. I think, but I think, did you say renewal or removal?
Renewals, impound, and disposal.
There is no fee for renewals this year, so that would not be part of the motion.
So it'll be waiving permit fees with the exception of impound and disposal.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Could we please just check with Ms. Nagaya and make sure that this is satisfactory?
Yes, so I think we're following the direction and confirming that, for revisiting the fee schedule, we would do that in spring of 2023 for potential adoption for the master fee schedule that takes effect July 1 of 2023.
So you don't need anything in there right now for the renewals, for the master fee schedule?
Correct, so I think we understood that to be something the council wanted to waive, and renewals wouldn't just by definition take effect until that time anyway. So that should be, that should be fine.
Thank you for your city council question or discussion. Seeing none, I roll for votes, City Councilmember.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. With that, we'll move on to regular business, the regular business portion of the meeting. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. Item I 1, receive and file report on labor relations and receive public input on upcoming labor negotiations with American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 829, Service Employees International Union Local 521, and Menlo Park Police Officers Association. The purpose of this agenda item is to receive public input on upcoming labor negotiations with employees represented by SEIU, ASCME, ASME, and the Police Officers Association. City council will take public input into consideration as we work with our designated negotiator to reach agreement on successor labor contracts with the subject employee groups. To introduce this item, introducing this item will be Assistant City Manager Nick Pagaras. Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Pagaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Good evening. The item before, the council, as stated by the mayor, is a procedural action that is specified by City Council Procedure CC-11-001 to collect public input on upcoming labor negotiations. I do not have a formal presentation at this time. However, I am available for questions if there is any need for clarification on the information contained in the staff report. I will add, for those members of the public who may have picked up the report 14 days ago when it was published originally, we did add a supplemental memo, and we added two new attachments, Attachment L and Attachment M, to provide additional information to questions that were submitted to staff since the issuance of the report. And with that, I will, I'm happy to answer any questions.
If it's okay with the council, let's go first to public comment on this item, and then we'll come back to see if there's any questions from Mr. Pagaras. City Clerk Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I 1, regarding receiving file report on labor relations related to SEIU, ASME, and the POA, please engage the hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone. You may address the city council at this time. Our first speaker will be Adina Levin. Adina, if you would like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Aha, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, speaking for myself, and speaking on a subject that I, you know, haven't done a lot of research and preparation on, but that in the overall national conversation about policing and public safety over the last year, there were a lot of light shone about some of the particular challenges in terms of accountability and, you know, the ability to have appropriate, you know, discipline and potential, you know, rehiring or firing of police officers that, you know, don't do a good job of defending and protecting the public. And there are some structural issues in terms of, like, why it is difficult to do this. I haven't, you know, looked in detail on the processes and procedures in Menlo Park, but I would urge the city to potentially reach out to NGOs that are expert in this complicated issue and get some advice about what processes we have and making sure that we have the right processes in place to make sure that the people that are supposed to protect and serve our residents do so. And one thing that was, that I had heard about Menlo Park Police in particular is that there were reports that in the agreements in sending Menlo Park Police officers to neighboring communities, there were reports that Menlo Park Police, you know, behaved, you know, inappropriately and harshly with people in neighboring communities. And if this is true, it would be really good to, you know, be able to find out about it and make sure that if people actually do that, that they don't wind up staying with MPPD. So this is something where it would be really fantastic if the city council could look into it, get the advice and support of NGOs that are expert in this area to make sure that our processes, make sure that the police protect our residents. Thank you, and for the residents of neighboring communities.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter will be Karen Grove. Karen, if you'd like to take yourself off the line, you may address the city council.
Thank you. I am also not an expert in this area, but I did a little bit of Googling. Just as one example of the kind of things to look for, are if there is a complaint filed against an officer, sometimes the union contract will stipulate that the officer is able to watch any videos and view all of the evidence before they are interviewed as part of any investigation into the alleged misconduct. So, you know, I think it's really important to have workplace protections against abusive complaints, but I think it's pretty evident that things are out of balance for police officers, future gun. So that's just an example. I second everything Adina said. I think this is a real opportunity to, now that we're all a little bit better educated about the systems that are having an impact on community safety, to right the wrongs. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for any public comment on item I 1, regarding labor relations. Asking SEIU, the POA. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So, questions for Mr. Pagaras? Are there, are there no? If there are no questions, we can mark this item as received and noted. There's no need for action. And so, so thank you, Mr. Pagaras. With that, this concludes our public input on labor negotiations with SEIU, ASME, and the POA. And with that, we will turn to item I 2, under regular business, receive and file report on labor relations and receive public input on unrepresented management compensation plan review. The purpose of this agenda item is to receive public input as city council reviews the unrepresented management plan. To introduce this item, again, as Assistant City Manager Nick Pagaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to just point out that there is a distinction between the previous report and this current item for the council. On the previous item, those three bargaining, those three organizations represent our city staff in specific classifications. However, with unrepresented management, there is not a formal negotiation that occurs. And however, the council does have the opportunity at any time to review the management compensation plan and make any changes at the public meeting that it desires. I would add that typically, the past practice is that that these, the unrepresented management and the represented employees go run concurrently for council consideration in the event the council decides to make policy changes. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let's go to public comment on this item, and then we'll come back to see if there's any questions for Mr. Pagaras. City Clerk Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I 2, regarding the receiving and filed report on labor relations related to unrepresented management, please engage that hand feature, top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone. You may address the city council at this time. Final call for any public comment on item I 2. Seeing no hands raised. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. So we'll bring it back to the virtual dais for any questions for Mr. Pagaras on this item in connection with unrepresented management. Seeing none, this item also will be noted as being submitted to the city council. And, and yeah, and this concludes our public input on the unrepresented management compensation plan. Again, no action was required on this item. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to regular business item I 3, Adopt Resolution Number 6612, Rescinding Withdrawal from Peninsula Library System Joint Powers Agency and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Five-Year Agreement in an Amount Not to Exceed $176,695 for a cloud-based enterprise technology platform to enhance public services. Library and Community Services Director Sean Reinhardt will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Just going to get my screen share set up here. Let's see if I can do this correctly. Okay, you should be looking at the first slide titled Peninsula Library System, JPA, etc. Is that accurate?
Yes, thank you, Sean.
Thank you very much. So yes, we're here this evening to discuss two items, seeking council approval on two items that are related, and so they're coming together, related to the Peninsula Library System Joint Powers Agency and Menlo Park's membership therein, as well as a proposed new enterprise technology platform. So here is the recommendation, as encapsulated in the title that the mayor just read. So I won't repeat it, but here it is for your reference. And again, it's in two parts. One is to adopt the resolution, and the other is to authorize the city manager to implement an additional platform. Excuse me. Just a little bit of background, how we got to where we are today. Back on June 23rd of 2020, the city council adopted the current fiscal year's operating budget, and that included some significant reductions to operating expenditures that were made necessary by the pandemic and the economic downturn. Among the proposed expenditure reductions was withdrawal from the Peninsula Library System JPA to recover some of those costs. So on July 14th of that same year, city council adopted a resolution formally notifying PLS, as they're known by their initials, of the city's intent to withdraw roughly a year later, which would be effective July 1st of 2021 this year. So then, on November 2nd, the city issued a request for proposals, or RFP, for an enterprise technology platform in anticipation of potentially withdrawing from PLS and then needing to implement a new platform to replace those services. And then shortly thereafter, on November 10th, the city council amended the fiscal year 2021 operating budget to adjust to updated revenue and expenditure reductions. And at that time, council members expressed an interest to potentially remain in the Peninsula Library System in light of the city's fiscal situation being slightly less dire than it had been projected in June. And then on December 8th, two qualified proposals were received in response to the RFP that had been submitted the month prior. So we're here to discuss those as well. So talking about the RFP, once those two responses were received across department team, including library and community services personnel, as well as from the IT department, evaluated the proposals. And what was pretty interesting is that the proposals, one in particular shed light on the range of innovation and opportunity that the city could leverage with this new technology. In particular, one proposal was very low cost, quite high value with the robust features it provides, and very flexible. We saw opportunity to enhance the quality of services to residents, in particular, to support new and emerging service models that had been necessary by the pandemic. And I'll go into more detail in a later slide about those. We saw the opportunity to improve operational efficiencies and achieve some cost savings through this platform. And we see an opportunity to utilize it as a foundational platform for the blended services that currently are in place with our newly combined department, library, and community services, and looking ahead to the blended services to be provided in the future Menlo Park community campus facility. And with all of that, it's possible. And with all of that, it is, it's possible and even desirable at this time to remain in the Peninsula Library System, kind of legacy platform and system for a number of reasons. One is the familiarity and continuity of services for the traditional library services residents are accustomed to, book circulation, library cards, borrowing materials from other libraries throughout San Mateo County. It would eliminate the workload that a full migration to a new platform by July 1st would entail. We were prepared to do it, but eliminating that workload definitely would be an advantage. And there would be no change to Menlo Park residents' current access to the PLS legacy system. They would, they would see no difference to how things are now. So we would continue to use the PLS legacy system if, if the council adopts the resolution rescinding the withdrawal. We would use it for those services, library cards, patron accounts management, the online library catalog of books and other materials, that database, as well as the seamless borrowing and loaning of books with the other libraries throughout San Mateo County. Now that said, the PLS legacy platform does have some limitations. One of the reasons why we considered withdrawing in the first place, and why council formally issued that notice. It is over 20 years old. It has not been substantially updated since. And you know, with technology, what that results in today is an inflexible system. It's rather outdated, and because it is essentially controlled by an external agency in San Mateo, we have limited local control of the various features and how we could apply them or convert them to meet new and emerging needs. That system, great at the traditional library functions, but it lacks the technical capability to support some of the new and emerging service models that I'll talk about on the next slide, I believe. That's necessitated multiple technical workarounds, literally Excel spreadsheets and other kind of hacks to deliver some of these critical new services during the pandemic. These are labor-intensive, and they limit the capacity of, of some of those services. We can't reach all the residents who need and would benefit from those services because of those limitations. And the legacy platform definitely lacks the capability to support the blended services that we now provide through the combined department, library, and recreation and other functions, and certainly with the new community campus, the Menlo Park community campus anticipated to open in a couple of years. So this current platform really couldn't achieve those things. However, one of the responses we received to the RFP could perform many of those things at a low cost with robust features that provide a high value, a very flexible system that, of course, we would locally control in partnership with the vendor. And it's a cloud-based system, so it's much more up-to-date than the hardware-based servers that the old system has. And it could be used as a platform for everything else that the PLS platform can't support, those new and emerging services such as books by mail for seniors and the immune compromised, people who have mobility challenges that prevent them from coming to the library can still get materials through the mail. A books-on-demand fulfillment and crowdsourcing service where residents could select virtually any book that exists and can be acquired for a reasonable cost and have it direct shipped to them as the first borrower. And then when they're finished with it, they just return it to the library. It would enhance our coordination of the citywide Little Free Library Network. Those are walkable, neighborhood-oriented book distribution points in every neighborhood in town, could be a key partner in distribution for books during the pandemic and beyond. And the system could help us coordinate that far more efficiently. Similarly, the seed lending library and seeds by mail program that was initiated during the pandemic, much more streamlined coordination and being able to ramp it up citywide would be possible with the platform. And additionally, a library of things collection for loaning objects, personal computers and Wi-Fi hotspots being key among them that we identified that's a critical need, that we're able to provide to some extent with the legacy platform, but not to the extent needed in the community because of the difficulty of scaling, as well as athletic equipment, garden tools, kitchenware, other things that people could borrow through the system. As well, the Cersei Dynix platform offers an integrated one-stop online event registration, meeting room scheduling, and electronic payment processing system, which would be highly valuable for the MPCC campus. And it's something that the PLS legacy platform simply doesn't provide. And again, it really would position us to have a foundational platform for building future seamless user experiences across programs in the new campus. From a budget impact perspective, it's rather cost-effective, very low cost, sufficient funding already exists in the IT plan capital budget to cover the first-year costs, which would include kind of the implementation and startup, and that's the amount there, $59,867 in the first year. And then for each of the next four years, for a five-year agreement, the annual cost could be incorporated into the library and community services operating budget with amounts ranging from $27,967 through up to $30,471 in the fifth year, which is a total five-year cost of $176,695. Very reasonable for a system of this, with this many features, of this high quality, with this level of flexibility, and the potential to eliminate labor-intensive manual workarounds that are currently in place, necessary to provide the services in the pandemic world, certainly. And it positions us to expand self-service and automation technology to meet changing needs in the future in a very efficient and cost-effective way to expand those services and capacity just through leveraging technology. So that's why we're recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to negotiate the agreement in response to this particular proposal. And that summarizes the formal presentation. Appreciate your time and consideration of this item. I'll put the recommendations back up on the screen for your reference, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for the presentation. Let's go to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the dais for, for any questions and direction.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item I3, adopt resolution number 6612, rescinding withdrawal from the PLS Joint Powers Agency and authorize the city manager to execute a five-year agreement in an amount not to exceed $176,695 for a cloud-based enterprise technology platform to enhance public services. Please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. This will be the last call for public comment on item I3. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. I'll sort of start off by saying, obviously, to all of the residents who called or emailed or even in person expressed deep concern about pulling out of PLS, we heard you. And, and so, and this certainly, what you're seeing is the result of some of that community concern about, about that system, even though, again, I think to Mr. Reinhardt's point, there, there's, there's lots lacking in, in the system. But so, Mr. Reinhardt, my concern, and of which, correct me if I'm wrong, we pay about $100,000 a year for, for PLS. Is that, is that correct?
Slightly less than that for the actual technology platform. I think that's more on the order of $90,000 per year. However, there are additional services that PLS provides, electronic resources like eBooks and whatnot, and the delivery costs. So all told, it's about $250,000 per year. That doesn't correlate exactly to just the technology, but in total.
Totally fair. So then, my question is, is that if, if the approval comes tonight, you're going to have two systems. So some people would say the one thing worse than having, you know, an old sort of buggy system is having two systems that you have to work with. So what, give me some sense of how you, you and your staff expect to overcome that.
Thank you. That's a great question. And in fact, we have more than two systems currently. There are many other additional systems that we've had to put in place just to provide some of the services, like books by mail and seeds by mail. And should the council approve the recommendations in front of you tonight? We would, the two systems would be used for really separate and distinct purposes. So they would be performing different functions, and there really wouldn't be any overlap for them. Maybe a useful way to think about it is that the PLS system would be for all the traditional library functions, and the Cersei Dynix new system would be for everything else. So the challenge is that we have these multiple legacy systems for library circulation, for event scheduling, for registration, electronic payment processing for room rentals, and none of these systems talk to each other. So that's why we have had to implement various workarounds to just manually crosswalk information and manually just get these services out to the community. This, this is labor-intensive, it's inefficient, and it limits the capacity, especially in light of our significantly reduced workforce as of June of last year or July of last year. The cost of the systems themselves isn't exorbitant, and it's not the main challenge. It's the cost and limitations of using labor to implement the, the manual workarounds. So implementing this additional system will really help us to gain efficiencies and be a more cost-effective way to not only provide the services, but to actually expand them to, to everyone who needs and wants them.
Thank you for that answer. Questions for Mr. Reinhardt? Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. So in the staff report, it talks about the first five years of the system being at a discounted rate, and then it goes up. Can you clarify, do you have any information about what the rates are after five years?
Specific rates beyond the five years would be subject to an additional request for proposals and further negotiations. As shown in the staff report, the initial five-year period, the Cersei Dynix vendor is offering a significant discount in the first five years. Five years, I would say, is sort of the outer limit of a time span when you would have the same system in place without undertaking another RFP process anyway. So it would remain to be seen what the pricing might look like five years hence in 2026. However, we have this sort of baseline to work from to kind of compare any proposals, you know, at that future date, you know, compared to the, the cost currently. If, if this was adopted, you'd be on the order of $30,000 per year. And so that would be kind of what we'd be comparing any additional proposals to at that future time.
Thank you. And so, one of the things I'm struggling with a little bit is, this seems a little out of order or backwards. It seems like we went out for an RFP for a whole new system, and then we got the proposals back, and then we kind of saw what was possible, and then are finding like a use for it. So if, if we hadn't have gone through that process and we were just sticking with PLS, and then we were looking at the MPCC campus and integration and new services, can you explain, like, because then we would have potentially gone out for an RFP? I'm just wondering if we're arriving at the same place, given kind of the backwards nature, the way I'm seeing it? And maybe you can clarify that.
Well, that's an astute observation. I think we've arrived at probably a similar place where we would have arrived had we gone out to bid specifically just for these additional services. At the time that the city council originally made the, the formal action to issue notice to withdraw from PLS, that was in July of last year. It was immediately following pretty substantial budget reductions, staff layoffs, as well as the combination of the department. And so, the, the thought at that time was simply to save costs, the $250,000 per year or thereabouts, costs of PLS, and find a different, maybe smaller system at a lower cost to provide some of those services. But in the time between then, and then when the RFP was issued in November, there was updated financial information available as to the city's financial position, which was slightly less dire at that time, and some adjustments were made. As well, some feedback from community members had, had come in indicating a desire to stay with the traditional and familiar system if possible. And council members at that time, one or more, I believe, indicated a desire to see if we could remain in PLS. That still didn't address the underlying kind of technical limitations of the current platform. So since we had proposals in front of us shortly thereafter, we saw that there was an opportunity to still address those technical needs at the same time. Either way, also in that intermediate period, we, we got a much, much more clarity as far as the extent of the pandemic's impacts on our service delivery capabilities and our service delivery models, and the need for services like books by mail on an ongoing fashion, seeds by mail on an ongoing fashion. So, you know, we had more of a, of a basis to sort of evaluate the proposals from the idea of, well, we're going to need these, this type of technological support anyway. And since the opportunity was there with the proposals right in front of us, and it fit the bill, that's why we kind of arrived at the same point that we would have had we gone in the other direction that you described.
I'll save my comments till after I hear other council members' questions. Thanks.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I just, so my concerns are around a separate and distinct platforms. The fact that we have an IT master plan, but these pieces weren't a part of it. And so, how are all of our systems going to work together if they're separate and distinct? Just curious. And I know that you're not a IT person, but I'm asking anyways.
No, that's a great question, and I, I think I can answer it fairly well. I do have quite a bit of familiarity with this type of platform. And what is also very promising about it is that the Cersei Dynix platform, it is a robust and complete library enterprise technology platform. So that does a couple of things. Crosswalking information between the two systems is extremely easy and seamless. So from the user perspective, they're not even going to see those backend handoffs taking place. It'll just be behind a web interface. Similarly, on the staff side, on the working side, again, those systems will talk to each other very seamlessly because they're speaking the same language, using the same library card numbers, using the same patron records, just passing them back and forth. So it should be completely seamless in that regard. If, at a later time, the city council, perhaps in the run-up to the opening of the MPCC, would like to return to the subject of potentially migrating all of the library functions into the Cersei Dynix platform, it's plug and play and ready to go to do that, should the council make that determination at a future time. So it does give quite a bit more flexibility to the city council, you know, at that future date, if that does come back for consideration.
Thank you. I have one follow-up question, and I do understand how we can better use technology, automation. Is this going to take away anyone's job?
No, absolutely not, Mayor. I'm sorry. Former Mayor, Councilmember Taylor. Actually, we'll free up the staff that we have to focus on tasks that really directly interact with and connect with the community, rather than be doing a lot more of the sort of manual kind of workaround, technical work on the backend. So if anything, it's going to give us additional staff capacity that's currently occupied with some of those tasks, so they can be refocused where it belongs, just serving the community directly.
Thank you.
Any other, Vice Mayor Nash?
Thank you. Well, I also, I very strongly agree with everything that's been, the concerns that have been voiced by Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Taylor. And sort of extending that more, my concern is that we have been working on an IT master plan for years and years, and we're finally getting this year to the, to the website. And I do not want to see anything distract from getting that done. And in the report, it even says that this will take time, that this will be done by the IT group, which is what I would expect. That makes sense. But I, I am concerned that we do not lose focus of what we are trying to do and get the IT master plan completed. And this sort of seems like, while it's a very interesting use of technology, and it just seems like it sort of has not been planned for, and I want to see us just really focus on the website and getting that done as quickly and efficiently and robustly as we can. And so I'm, I'm very concerned about having this be a distraction.
Councilmember, that is a valid concern. One of the reasons why the recommendation is to remain in the Peninsula Library System is it completely eliminates the type of workload on the IT department that would entail, you know, a full migration of the entire that would entail, you know, a full migration of the entire library platform over. So at this, what's proposed here, as far as how this implementation would be carried out, the vast majority of the work, with certainly some technical assistance by IT, could be performed by the vendor, because that's part of the implementation costs of the new system, and library and community services staff who have technical expertise with this type of system. So I believe that the impacts on the, the other work, and very important work related to website overhaul and other elements of IT master plan should be very minimally impacted. It's, it's really like a plug and play type of service, the way that we would implement it. So there's, there should be pretty minimal impacts.
Another question, one comment is, you said that the $60,000 is already in the IT capital budget. I just want to point out that in January, we had to add $100,000 in order to the IT capital budget. I believe it's the same one, in order to do the website. And so I'm a little bit confused that there, you know, if there were $60,000 there, why we needed to add the full $100,000? Sort of as a statement.
Yes, it looks like the city manager maybe has a little more detail about that element. Thank you.
Well, I just want to clarify that we wanted to make sure that it was publicly, public knowledge that we were funding this project, and that we weren't doing it in the absence of the council authorization. So I think to your point, in both cases, we wanted the council to approve the $100,000. So it was clear that it was a priority. And in this case, we want to make sure the council's aware, so that there are no surprises for the council or for the public.
Thank you.
And if I may, one other element related to the IT master plan that I neglected to mention in my earlier comments is that several of the components that are called out in the IT master plan, improved cash handling, room reservations, and event registration are components of the IT master plan that this system would help us to address. So, so it does touch on, on the IT master plan. Again, it kind of got there from maybe a different path than we first anticipated, but we did arrive, and it would address those elements.
So I guess I'm still just wondering, given our resource constraints, I understand the benefits, I understand that it supports more of a blended service, which is something that we had not looked at and certainly wasn't as part of the IT master, you know, there when, with the IT master plan. But does it, why do this now, as opposed to realizing that this is a good system and doing it once we complete like the website and when the pandemic, you know, when there's more resources available?
You know, that's a great question. Really, I think the pandemic is, is kind of the first answer why now there is an incredible urgency related to the services that folks are seeking from library and community services during the pandemic, which, as we all know, has extended quite a bit longer than any of us hoped and is expected to extend well into this calendar year. Just for example, the books by mail service, really critically important to retain, give people access to library books, especially now when they're really cordoned off at home. That, that service currently, we're only capable to serve up to about 500 registered participants at this time. Yet currently, there are over 10,000 books on request in the library holds queue that could potentially be serviced if we had a system that, you know, kind of facilitated it automatically as opposed to manually. So, you know, the, the need kind of exists now. Also, we have the opportunity with this particular proposal, which is highly competitive, very high value, a low cost to the city. And that, you know, that's why the recommendation is to avail ourselves of it now, because the opportunity exists, and the timing works well with service needs out there.
And then one final question. Thank you for those answers. And that's on table two in the report with the cost comparison. I understand the $176,000 for the five-year cost for software and services. There's also, the way I read it, or another $117,000 in implementation fee, data extraction, interloan library system, one-year cost for software migration. Is that something that will be needed, or was that just if that, if we were doing that as, and could you please explain?
I'd be happy to. I just want to make sure we're looking at the same table, because there were a lot of tables in there. Page I, three dot nine of the and you're asking why there are zeros under the Peninsula Library System implementation fee, et cetera?
No, actually, I'm assuming that these were sort of standalone costs. Correct me if I'm, if that's different, but I was, I'm wondering the costs for the total cost for the Cersei Dynex was 294,061. I understand that 176,725 is the five-year cost, but there's, which leaves $117,000, and I'm wondering what
Yeah, you know, that, that table could have been kind of, I think, arranged a little more clearly, because I do see now how it is confusing. So those additional costs above and beyond the 176,000 were when we were approaching it with the possibility that we would migrate all of the PLS functions into Cersei Dynex. And those would not be the case here, because we are not proposing to do that. In one case, interlibrary loan system, that's a pre-existing kind of third-party system that's tagged onto PLS. And that also would just continue to exist, and it wouldn't be an added cost, because it's already baked in to PLS. But if we had left PLS, we would have had to take that cost on ourselves. And I believe that's the same with some of the other items that are on here. So that, that explains the difference, and I apologize. It could have been more clearly arranged in the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just though to reiterate that point, the, we are authorizing a total, if, if this is authorized by the council, a total of $176,000, right? And that, that is over this five years, and that is the max that would be expended in connection with this, this program, correct?
Correct. The way that the recommended action is phrased, it would be a not-to-exceed amount and authorize the city manager to negotiate the actual contract not to exceed that top amount.
Thanks. Um, so, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. So where, where are we at here? I've, I've heard some skepticism about portions of what, what's being proposed. If, if there are, if there is, then we can sort of separate out the two items, and we can just take up sort of revocation of, of, of the, of the, the sort of the decision to, to leave the PLS. And then, and then, then take up the, this sort of this cloud-based technology platform proposal separately. If, if there is, is, is that that concern, or we can keep it as staff has proposed it as, as one item, if there is a general sort of consensus, even given the concerns about, about, about the items. Vice Mayor Nash?
I would like to see them separated.
Okay. Right, I, I think that, so, so then let's then does someone want to, I, I don't think that there is, just so we can be efficient about this, I think there seems to be general support all around for rescinding the withdrawal from PLS. Does someone want to make a motion on, on, on that, Councilmember Mueller?
Make the motion to withdraw from PLS. I mean, not to withdraw from PLS, to rescind the withdrawal. Sorry, I make the motion to rescind the withdrawal from PLS.
Is, is there a second? Councilmember Taylor, are you seconding? Are you, do you have a comment? You're, you're seconding. Okay, we got, we got it first and the second.
The live side have a first by City Councilmember Mueller, and a second by City Councilmember Taylor for document resolution number 6612, rescinding withdrawal from the Peninsula Library System joint powers. Any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you, City Clerk Herron. And so then to the, the other part of, of the proposal from staff, which is authorize the city manager to execute $176,000 for a cloud-based enterprise technology platform to enhance public services. So where, where are we at there? I, I know that there are some concerns. I'll just sort of kick it off. I am generally supportive of, of, of this. I, I hear the concerns that we sort of backended into this. And was this a solution in search of a problem after we sort of, you know, sought out this, this, this larger proposal that would have been needed if we had migrated fully from, from PLS? But, but I do think that there is, there is opportunity here to, to, with regards to some of the services provided by the library to, to provide technological efficiencies. And, and I'm not saying that the cost is, is, is irrelevant here, but it, it's not on an annual basis a large cost. And, and so I think it's, it's worth deferring to staff on, on, on this, the extent to which they think that there are efficiencies there. So that's where I stand on it, but let's, let's go around and see where, where we are and, and go from there. Councilmember Wilson?
Um, thank you, Mayor Combs. Yeah, I'm actually leaning the other way. I appreciate Mr. Reinhardt's information. I'm just questioning, and I, I get the, the books by mail, I see that as an important service. I'm, maybe I'm not understanding the 10,000 books on hold and what that looks like with the system and without the system. But other than that, I feel like we are about to take potentially a hard look at the services that we are offering coming out of COVID. While the seed by mail program, you know, might be lovely, I'm not sure if that's something long-term that we're going to be offering. And I just wonder if, given the uncertainties of the pandemic, if now is the best time to build a system around our current circumstances, especially when we have the MPC on the horizon. And I want to make sure that we, if we're looking at a system with MPC, that we're really giving it the time to look at it holistically and not kind of reaching it in a, in a, in a roundabout way. And then, and then to Vice Mayor Nash's point about maintaining focus. I think, you know, we have council goal-setting on the information item, and one of the messages that we were receiving from staff is we need to be focused. And so while I think this, I, I understand that there's some workarounds and a little bit of sticky tape and bubble gum going on here, but we're in a little bit, if it's working right now, for the most part, I'd rather kind of keep it working and then assess more holistically, potentially in six months or a year or so. So that, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. So we're at one one. Councilmember Taylor?
I am still gathering my thoughts on this. So my concern is just about how all of these systems are going to work together. I appreciate Mr. Reinhardt just explaining about how the staff now is focusing on, on tasks that can be done by this system, and it would free up some of our staff to do things that are more service-related, direct, service-related with our residents. I'm, I'm still, I'm on the fence. I'm a supporter of technology making us more efficient, and I do realize that a lot of these things that have come to us recently is because of, it's because of COVID. It's not because of anything other than that. And so I don't see the doddor amount as the factor. I'm more concerned about, we, we had the library strategic plan on our agenda for the goal-setting. And I had some questions and concerns about that. We've had the website on our agenda a few weeks ago. I just want to make sure that our technology is going to work together and is actually going to improve, because we've gotten a lot of questions and concerns from our residents. So at the moment, I'm, I'm not a yes or a no.
Okay, so yeah, that, Councilmember Taylor is on the fence. You may be able to stay on the fence, but let's, let's see, are you, but you, you may have to come off of it one way. But so we're gonna, we're gonna continue on. Vice Mayor Nash?
So I am, let's wait. Now's not the right time to be making this decision. It sounds like an intriguing opportunity, but just is it the right thing to be doing now? We need to focus.
Okay, cool. So we're two nays, one yay. Councilmember Mueller?
I, I, you know, I, I very much appreciate where staff is going, trying to enhance public services. The difficulty that I'm having right now is that I think that there are staffing decisions that we've made that candidly are going to need to be revisited in the priority saving process and the budget process. And as much as I want our, our public library to have enhanced public services, I also want to bring back the services we have in our other departments. So where I am is, is, is not, is not a no, it's just a not now.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. So, um, we've given, so council has given direction on this in the sense of rescinding the revocation. The city manager or city clerk, do, do we need to give any additional direction? The votes aren't there for, for this, this cloud technology platform, but do we have to actually take up a motion on it? I, I would say no, since we have acted on this, but, but I want, I want you to let, let me know if I'm right or wrong.
I would agree with you. I think taking no action is action. So I think we counted the votes as well. We don't have them, so we can move on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, City, City Manager Jerome Robinson. And, and, and Councilmember Taylor, you can stay on the fence. It's totally fine. Okay, with that, we'll move on to information items. And so does, let me see what's what my notes say about moving on to information. Okay, there we go. Informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, a city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. With that, we'll, we'll go to, to see if there, there's any public comment on the informational items.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on any of our informational items, J1 through J6, regarding city council agenda topics, post amendments to city council procedures, the user fee cost recovery fiscal policy, emergency water storage supply, goal-setting workshop summary, and interview panel recommendation with the housing element. Please engage the hand feature on the top right side of your screen. You'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. Our first speaker will be Jennifer Johnson. And Jennifer, unmute yourself and let us know which item you are commenting on before you begin your comment.
Hello. Um, I have comments about J2 and J3. I'm concerned about the proposed changes to, so in, so starting with J2, I'm concerned about the proposed changes to the procedures relating to roles and responsibilities of commissions and advisory bodies. And as of March 2013, the rules included, upon referral by city council, the commission shall study referred matters, blah, blah, blah. And then, upon its own initiative, the commission shall identify and raise issues to the city council's attention from time to time. And at the request of a member of the public, the commission may consider, and so on and so forth. The new proposed changes essentially are narrowed down to, upon referral by the city council, the advisory body shall study referred matters and return their recommendations and advice to city council. My question is, could you speak to why the council would want to limit the ability of the public and commissions from bringing issues to their attention? and commissions from bringing issues to their attention? And my comment about that is that I believe that members of the public and commissioners provide valuable perspectives to council's work and that the existing opportunity to do so should be preserved. That's for R2. And that's, so for R3, I just have a, a small question in terms of the cost recovery model, is that the Parks and Rec master plan recommended a change to the fee structure such that there would be comparable programming across sites? And that there would be some kind of scholarship program or fee forgiveness program for people who may not be able to afford the costs of the comparable programs, rather than having two separate sets of programs? That's it.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for any public comment on our information items. J1 through J6. No further hands raised. Mayor Combs, please continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. So with regards to the, the city council procedures, J2, do Mr. Pagaros or, are the city clerk want to respond to Ms. Johnson's concern? Mr. Pagaros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the effort to, to streamline the processes or the procedure is intended to provide for greater capacity control on the work that is, that is expected of staff. And I think one of the challenges that we've faced, and the council has every opportunity to either accept or reject the recommended change, but one of the challenges that we've had is that a great deal of staff work can be generated by, by legitimate inquiries. But at the same time, as is detailed in J5, there is, there really is not an opportunity to, to focus on those additional requests. And so the procedure does not prevent members of the public from approaching the council. And if the council has, has a desire to pursue that item, that, that will, then the council can make a decision to assign that to an advisory body. But we're really trying to do our best to manage with the resources that we have available.
Thank you, Mr. Pagaros. Councilmember Mueller.
Is it just information items tonight? So there's no action really required or direction required? We're just taking up the comment before council, right? Okay. I have comments on other items, but I'll wait until then, until the comments on this one are exhausted.
Okay. Well, then I just wanted to switch to, just to cover the public comment or the items that got brought up and, and public comment. So Ms. Johnson also talks about J3, right, the sort of cost recovery item. And I, I know that Mr. Jacobson is the staff point person on that item, but with regards to what she specifically mentioned, is, is there another, is it Mr. Jacobson who is best to speak on that? Or is there, is there another staff person? Maybe Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So I can speak to it briefly, but it would just, again, say that this will come before council in a study session at the next council meeting. So there will be another opportunity to, to discuss the cost recovery policy in greater detail. I know that it has been a proposal of the Library and Community Services Department to run a scholarship opportunity program, sort of as was described. So I, I know that they are considering how that may operate. I think that it may be something that is somewhat separate from the cost recovery policy, however. So they would potentially run in parallel.
Counsel, okay, thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Councilmember Mueller.
So I just want to express my thanks to the public speakers on these items. One of the, one of the benefits of information items is that you get to hear that public input and then think about it before you start making comments and asking questions. And so with thoughtful comments, I appreciate staff's thoughtful responses and we'll be thinking about them for, for the, for the items come back to us.
And, uh, Councilmember Mueller, did you have, you were saying you had comment, comments you wanted to make on, on some other informational items? Or was that it?
Yeah, I did. I had one, one comment for, in the information item. And then one for, in council member reports on a, something, question about something to take up. And both are kind of similar work. Is it now? Because I want to head up to council. I talked about this matter with Councilmember Taylor and with the city manager. And it pertains to the downtown. After goal setting, there's been quite a bit of feedback that we've received relating to downtown and why was it not one of the goals of the council? And I think there, again, is some misunderstanding of what goal setting, priority setting is. And that doesn't mean there isn't work being done on that in, within the year. And certainly, as, although it wasn't reported or discussed in goal setting, you know, we have actually retained a consultant to do economic development in the city. And we have a council subcommittee working on this issue. But, but I also do understand the, the concerns of the public that, who have expressed that, what we have all expressed over the course of the last few years, and that's that the downtown hardscape is badly in need of renewal. And I think the thing that I plan on raising with you all when we next meet on this, and just to give it an answer, you have to think about it before then, is the idea that we can actually move this project forward without, in, in a way that's, I think, smart as it comes to staff capacity by utilizing a tool called a request for information. A request for information is a, something that public jurisdictions do when they don't want to, don't want to, they don't have enough information yet to issue an RFP. But they're trying to gather information to educate both the jurisdiction and their policymakers on what is possible. And in this circumstance with the downtown, it seems appropriate to go to the, the, those who are knowledgeable in this area and to, so like urban architecture firms, architects, you know, those who might have projects, and say to them, we'd like you to look at our downtown. We have an RFI on this, and we'd like to tell you what is possible in terms of updating, updating the hardscape and improving the architecture and, and, and renewal. And in doing and issuing an RFI, what would happen? And we can do this with, the great thing about this is because we already have an economic development firm consultant. They actually, we could, this would actually be assigned to the economic development consultant to construct the RFI with the city management and the subcommittee. And the council could even look at the RFI before it went out. But it wouldn't need a lot of cap, of staff capacity. It would bring back a lot of information to the city that we could look at and sort of start that process of getting informations from, information from experts. And, and getting, getting us thinking about what's the very best way to approach this if we are, if we are, as, as I believe we will be making a commitment to update what that hardscape looks like in a way that, that I think that the, the public yearns for. So that's something I wanted to bring that to my fellow council members, our fellow council members' attention because it is a discussion that we have all had. And I think it's, it'll be worthy of discussion in the council priority session, council goal setting meeting. So that was under J5. And then the other issue, and then certainly in the council goal setting meeting, I think we'll also be having a discussion about the cap, but we'll wait until then for that. The, um, the other issue I have, Mayor Combs, I can wait until council member reports.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you for, for, for those, those comments, Councilmember Mueller. I, I would just add a couple of things on J5. So we do have time scheduled for the next meeting to review goals. And I would like to go through, and again, for the goal setting workshop, there was a lot of focus on things that came up in, in, things that were presented by staff, things that came up in public comment and the things that were generated by, by the council. But there is a long list of things that, that was already on that list, that, that's already priorities. And I think a number of those things can be sort of cleaned up, and by cleaned up, I'm, I'm saying removed. And just for, for the sake of, of having a list that isn't overwhelming, you know, whether I, I think that the, the efforts on there is to sort of do things like maximize the number of residential units as part of the specific plan. I mean, something like that, you know, will just get sort of, I, I think, consumed within the housing element. And, and I just think that there are a number of other things there that can probably be, be removed. And so I do want to just give the heads up that, that I, I do want to spend some time, you know, removing items from, from, from the priorities. And then the other thing was, I wanted to sort of just say on J6, formation of interview panel to provide recommendation to full city council on the selection of a housing element consultant for house, for, for the housing element. So again, this is just an informational item, but I'm sure you'll through it and, and the mayor makes two appointments from the council. My leaning is to, to, to select Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Taylor. But if there is some objection to that, then let me know. Okay, so, so that, those are all, all the things I have to, to share out with regards to the informational item. Is, is there any questions from, from anyone else? Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I don't, I don't have a, a question. And that was the most exciting part, I think, J6 on the agenda for me. I just wanted you to know that. My, my comment on, on J5 was, it was actually along the lines of what you said, Mayor Combs. Number 31, I thought, which is basically creating a, a subcommittee within the MPCC, a task force or a working group. And so it was something that was, that was already decided. So I don't think that it needed to be on the list. And that was my only comment.
Right. Cool. Thank, thanks for that comment. Yeah, hopefully there's a lot of those things that we can, we can, we can remove from the list. Councilmember Wilson and then Vice Mayor Nash.
Um, thank you, first of all, Mayor Combs. I will ask good questions of the interview panel and report back. For J5, the goal setting, I think I, I agree if we could clean up some of the things on the list, that would be great. And I might follow up with staff after, but one thing that I think would be helpful, and I, I, I don't think this would take up, I hope this, I'm, my intention is for not, this is not to be a lot of work. But if you take all of those items and just like top of mind, like, is it like a one or two or three? Like, on the scale of what we're asking for? Maybe even in this fiscal year and then over the course of the project. So we know if we have, you know, a, a shopping bag full of capacity, we could fill it with either, you know, 100 grapes or like three watermelons or something. But we have to know how much, how big and small the little items are. So I have a little idea of how to contextualize that. And I really, it's really just like a, like a quick pass just to give us some framework. And then my other comment about the info items in general was just, a lot of the info items reference February 23rd. And I'm just concerned in terms of with goal setting on there and then master fee schedule and then all the policies of procedure manual. It seems like a lot. And I just wanted to flag that and tell you I'm a little concerned.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. You and me both. I, I think, I don't know how many hours are scheduled for that, that meeting or that, you know, the, the staff has projected. It's, it's like half the day, I think, essentially. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take note of that. But with the, the city manager popping on, maybe we'll transition into item K, which is the city manager's report. So you can respond to Councilmember Wilson. Oh, okay. Mr. Pagaros, didn't tell me, did I miss something? Oh, you, I can't hear you.
I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just have a procedural question, which I, I don't know if the city manager is planning to ask. So I'll wait to hear. I just didn't want to leave the info items.
Okay, all right. All right. So maybe, maybe, maybe we shouldn't leave the info items. Why don't you go? And we'll, we'll, we'll go from, from there.
Yeah. So I, I guess in preparation for February 23rd, specific to goal setting, the, it would be helpful for me to have some clarity from the council about how the list will be whittled down. I think I've heard that from a couple of council members. One, two, there is a tremendous amount of work that will go into how I understand Councilmember Wilson's recommendation, because I don't, these projects are not scoped. And so we don't know the extent to how, of how far or how much time many of these projects, particularly the ones that are not carryover projects. But even on the carryover projects, the scope is unclear to staff. And I don't know that, we had a process of doing projects on a page to try to identify the scope. I don't think that that necessarily was helpful to, or I, I don't know that it was necessarily seen as a useful tool. But right now, I would say that we have a list, an attachment for, for attachment to J5 with a number of ambiguous projects that will be very difficult for staff to scope and identify resources. And so that's my second question. So the first question, again, is who's going to help us whittle this down? Because I don't know that it's, I, I would be concerned about doing it myself or even with a group of, of staff members without council member, or council feedback. And then secondarily, doing a basket or a shopping bag approach is not feasible at this time for the 23rd. We just don't know enough about all of these items to, to do that.
Well, thanks, Mr. Pagaros. So the one about like who, who whittles it down, as, as I see it, it is, it is going to be the council. I mean, my, and again, I could be delusional here, but, but my idea is that like we really just sort of go down this list and I'm like, is there three votes? If not, let's move on. And, and, and so like, because I remember, I think, early, my first goal setting session, I, I think there was something that I was trying to get off the priorities list. It was the downtown parking lot. And I think it was Mr. Pagaros, you who told me, it was like, the only way something can get off the priorities list that has been put on the priorities list by the council is the majority of the council. And so, and I took that as instruction to, to me to go back and find two votes if, if I, if I wanted to, to get rid of the downtown parking structure. So in my mind, it is, it is literally sort of, you know, limiting, at least for some of these items, discussion and saying like, you know, is, is there, are there three votes for this? If not, then let's, let's, let's move this to some sort of, you know, parking lot. And, and so I don't see that as something that we would be asking staff to do. And so, and so that's how I see this. Again, we'll, we'll see how this all sort of goes down at the next council meeting. And then, but regarding the other, your other question, I will, I will defer to, to Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Pagaros, for speaking up about that. My, my intention is not to create more work. My intention is that I'm trying to find a balance between, sometimes I've noticed that council sometimes asks Sometimes I've noticed that council sometimes asks staff, you know, or has an interest in a project or an initiative, and then staff kind of is like, we don't have, we can't do, or like, we if we're going to do that, we can't do something else or. Um, so that's like one end of the spectrum. And then the other end of the spectrum is like, here's exactly what it would take for every little thing. And I feel like right now, we're kind of, we we live in this, there's just, as a council member, it's just hard to know the the extent of the asks that we have. Um, I I I don't I don't have the exact answer, and maybe this year we won't have it. But I'm just saying, as a decision maker, it's hard to calibrate the asks given those two extremes. Um, and I don't know where the sweet spot is, but I'm just saying that it's going to be really hard for me to to get a sense of what's how to make trade offs without any kind of um calibration other than, oh, that that'll cause other things to bump, or I hope I'm making sense. Just some kind of like trade off. But if if that's not possible this year, I understand. I'm not I'm really not trying to make things difficult. I'm just trying to get have enough information to make um thoughtful decisions for our community. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, can't see you. Um, yeah, uh, council member Willison, uh, I I completely appreciate the the concern, and I can and I completely understand um the request for information. And in an ideal in an ideal world, we would have clarity over scope, clarity over budget, and clarity over uh over duration. Um, we, you know, for a variety of for a variety of reasons, uh, none not that, you know, the the pandemic not not withstanding is uh we have, um, I I think that staff has made a recommendation to the council about uh potential priorities for next year. And it's the council's prerogative clearly to to reprioritize or to provide alternatives in different direction. Uh, I just, I given the scope of of ideas and not to mention, I mean, that that is mentioned in the in the um in the uh in the staff report, we're also working to pull together all of the capital projects, which are coming before the council for a study session in in March, I believe. Um, there's also a bunch of operational projects, and I I you you know, I at some point, we'll have to do this, and I don't know when, but uh that in and of itself is a year's worth of work to pull all the pieces together and um and make an educated decision about how to move forward. Absent sort of the uh finger in the wind, I I I'm fairly confident that my team can get this done this year. And council, I'm willing to commit to you that we will make progress on this. But other than that, um, I don't I I I really don't know how to move forward um by way of filtering all of the really, I mean, we're at the end of the day, it'll probably be a list closer to three or four hundred items uh that include capital projects, operational issues uh that require attention and uh resources as well. So I I I apologize if I'm sounding like I'm not responding to your question or your request for information. That's not the intent. I think the intent is to, with the limited resources that we do have available, and there are always resource constraints, even in the best of budget times. With the limited resources that we have available, how are we using our staff to the great highest and greatest capacity uh in order to move this project or move this process forward? And and and, you know, adding projects is 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 one of the challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Pogaros, uh, Vice Mayor Nash.
I guess um one of the things that um would be good to see is just, and I realize you won't be able to do this right off at the meeting, I assume, um, but just there may be some, I would like to see if we want to pursue a project and we can't do it with and it can't be done with current staff, how could it be done? Just, you know, sort of brainstorming, like, is it possible to put resources to get a consultant to do it? Is it possible for anyway, just how can it be done? As opposed to just know it can't be done because we don't have the resources? And realizing that that'll sort of be a presumably seat of the pants um discussion, but at least to see, is it possible to possibly add something that council might feel is very, very important? Um, but we don't have, we know that we don't have the resources for, but is there another way to do it? And there may or may not be, but just if we can keep that piece open to um hopefully say, yes, but this is what it would take, as opposed to just saying, no, we can't do it because of resources.
Uh, and and I, council or Vice Mayor Nash, I apologize if if you're if if what I'm saying um is coming across as no. I I I don't want that to be the takeaway uh from the council this evening about this particular process. Um, there is just too much uh that is that that uh we would like to accomplish. And that's all and and there's nothing wrong with setting aspirational goals and stretching stretching our teams and uh making use of different resources, whether they be volunteer or consultant. Um, I am just just from as a from my professional perspective, I'm having difficulty seeing a path forward or a clear path uh that um sets everyone up for success. Nobody wants to adopt a plan that we fail on. Um, nobody, and I'm not saying that we should adopt a plan where we can't where where we under promise and over deliver. But again, I I mean, there is great uncertainty about a number of items, even on the twenty twenty carryover project list, and how those will move forward and what the scope is. And and I know this is not the this is not necessarily a task that is is traditionally uh handled by the by the city council, uh, because there are a lot of interplay between uh teams and people who move who who leave, people who come on board, rulings from different agencies about what we can and can't do, grants. There are always constraints. And um what, again, I think the management challenge here is to I is to understand, you know, what is the what are what is the majority of the council's priority? Which projects are those? And then we scope them. Um, and and uh we can share with you the the trade offs of that um if we understand. But to take a large list and try to scope that so then we can narrow it down is very difficult. It's 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 much more efficient if you can identify what you want to do, and then we scope it and tell you what the consequences are.
I I completely understand that, and I did not mean to imply that we should do it, even with, you know, a portion of this. I'm assuming that from the twenty third, it the meeting on the twenty third or sometime soon thereafter, we will actually have it narrowed down to a fairly finite list, at which point um we will still have, I'm sure. I mean, very honestly, just given the MPCC and the housing element um with all of the different pieces that the housing element entails, that's huge for their city, along with dealing with the pandemic and everything, you know. I think we all get that, um, but it's just, is there, are there any creative ways to add um capacity? And what would that look like um once we get a very narrowed down, whittled down list? And then it's going to be something where there's a good chance that we it just won't be possible for one reason or another. Um, you know, finances or whatever, but at least, you know, I'd like to go into this saying, let's see how we can creatively do it and then decide that that doesn't make sense, as opposed on a smaller list of items. But I totally understand that we are very much at capacity, and we also want to be able to be successful at what we do.
So if I may, I I really appreciate the council taking time tonight to discuss this. I I think it will be helpful, though, to be using concrete examples. And so I think this this is a good um starting conversation for the con the discussion at the meeting at the twenty third. I mean, very helpful. I appreciate it.
Um, with that, uh, city manager, I think we can go into uh whether you have any reports.
So uh, I did want to just back up and and respond to the comment about the length of the meeting on the twenty third. I I will be working with the mayor and the vice mayor. The number of items that we have on that agenda is just undoable. I think we've got it clocked to about ten hours right now. We we all know we run out of energy about five or six hours into a meeting on a good day. So we'll we'll work with everybody to just try and narrow that down. And then transitioning into the city manager report. Oh, I'm sorry. Council member Mueller, did you?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Well, I just wanted to uh give a heads up to the community and to the council that we will be holding our police chief interviews, the first round of interviews this week. So I'm optimistic. I think we have an excellent slate of candidates, and so I'm feeling very excited about that. And that's the totality of my report for tonight.
Thank you. Um, so then with that, we can go into council member uh reports. Um, I I'll just kick out a kickoff. Um, as as everyone know, I'm the city council's representative to the San Francisco Guido Creek uh JPA, the the big project uh that the the JP has been working on for a number of years is uh the replacement of the Pope Chaucer Bridge, which comes along with the uh certain whitening um uh projects, creek whitening projects, too. Um, there has been some concern expressed by members of the Menlo Park uh community about the removal of trees in relation to that project. And so in response to that, the JPA is scheduling a community forum specifically um to address tree removal. So that the topic will be uh will be exclusively and solely tree removal. I mean, obviously, they'll provide a an overview of the project in general, but but the goal is to to narrow down very specifically and make sure that all community um that concerns about tree removal uh are 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 addressed. And and currently, that project is scheduled to go on the 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 Menlo Park side. It also needs to be approved on the Palo Alto side, but uh it's it's scheduled to go to the planning commission and then ultimately to 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 the city council. Um, you you know, there has been some expression of interest that it go to the EQC, uh, given the removal of of trees. Uh, that isn't currently on the schedule, but it it is, it is, that doesn't mean it it that can't happen. Um, if if after the end of if if following this community meeting, there there still is lots more questions that that residents felt can only be addressed with the EQC, then I I think um I I will um connect with the JPA staff and with city staff about what might be the appropriate way forward. Um, so that's that's my my council member report. Uh, Vice Mayor Nash, and then and then council member Willison.
I actually have a report, but I I have a question for you about the JPA first, and I apologize because of Brown Act. I've not been able to ask you this separately, but I have heard from community members that the bridge will not um it it will not satisfy the requirement for flood insurance, and so people will still be required to have flood insurance. Do you know?
Yeah, and so uh the 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 requirement for flood insurance is is determined by FEMA, right? And so um and and so in theory, the project that is currently planned, which is uh, you know, re redoing the bridge and whitening the creek in in some portions, is a creek, is is a is a uh a project that matches the the levels of the flood of record, and the flood of record is nineteen ninety eight. And I think that that is considered a seventy year flood. Um, and so these requirements do not match uh the level of a hundred year flood. And so if if it is the case that FEMA makes a determination that uh that you're out of the flood zone whenever the the sort of flooding uh uh, you know, exposure is has to sort of account for a hundred year flood, then then that that doesn't happen with this project. The idea is that this project, married with a detention project on Stanford campus, does then bring you into the realm of 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 hundred year flood protection. But uh, but this pretty, so whether it it would get people out of the uh requiring uh flood insurance, it's not a hundred percent clear, but what is a hundred percent clear is this project alone does not provide you a hundred percent flood protection. Um, it it only provides you about seventy percent, or excuse me, a a hundred a hundred year flood, a hundred year flood protection. It provides you a seventy year flood protection. Uh, Vice Mayor Nash.
Um, thank you. That's exactly what I have heard. And is there anywhere um where that people can find out more information, or maybe that's the whole story?
Yeah, I mean, you you know, the EIR of this project, which is massive, I mean, the the these are and um uh, the JPA's website uh has like a lot of this 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 these resources there. Um, and again, and one of the the um the challenging elements is that um for a number of years, the the JPA has been trying to actually gain access to to Stanford property in order to sort of start the process of doing even a minimal analysis on on what sort of detention basins um might might look like, or or whether they're they're feasible or not. And again, these would be detention basins on Stanford property. Um, and so that that's been that's been a challenge. Stanford has somewhat recently uh agreed to allow the JPA to to access its property uh to do, again, like I say, a very preliminary analysis um with regards to that that upstream project. Um, but um but I would encourage members, a lot of this is 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 on the JP's website. Um, and uh they can attend our monthly meetings. We almost every meeting, there is some amount of time devoted to to this specific project, obviously. Um, and again, and just another element, and not to get into the weeds and I'll shut up. Um, but another sort of element is that the the Newell Bridge, which is downstream, that is a Palo Alto project. It connects Palo Alto and East Palo Alto. That bridge actually has to be replaced before we can replace the Pope Chaucer Bridge. Um, and so and where that the timeline on that bridge has been something of some discussion and is not quite clear to me. Uh, um, and I think that there's been some disagreement between Palo Alto and JP exactly about what is the timeline of that project. But that that the Newell project has to be completed before before the Pope Chaucer project is is completed. Uh, council member Willison.
Yeah, just um, can you let us, can you provide information on this community meeting? So um, I know a lot of people like trees.
Yeah, okay, I will. I will um m- make sure that we add it to um what it well, I'll I'll announce it in the next uh the next council meeting and then make sure that it gets added to like the city community calendar. Okay, so then Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to report out on two events from the PCE Peninsula Clean Energy. And one I might have reported out before, so I apologize if I did, but this is one of the first times we've had report out when it's not midnight or way past eleven. Um, one is that um Menlo Park um received a hundred thousand dollar grant in technical assistance from PCE for building decarbonization and EV infrastructure, which supports our climate action plan goals, number one and number three. And that was done in it was in early January or in in January where um that meeting, so um where this hundred thousand dollars in technical assistance um was um voted on. It was unanimous vote, and I want to um do a special showed up shout out to Rebecca Lucky, Josie Gaylord, and Tom Cabot, who have been partnering with PCE and sort of pushing us um and other initiatives forward. And then the other part at this um at the last meeting, which was in um the end of January, um, we just voted unanimously as um PCE to join seven other community choice aggregators to partner to form a community, California Community Power. Um, it'll be a new JPA, and essentially what it does is it um combines a smaller um community uh clean energy uh groups to aggregate, and therefore, I believe it puts it at about um at a significant um percentage of the, it gives us much more buying power and leverage, essentially. It it makes us much more equal to um to PG&E, it's like puts us at like thirty or forty percent. I'm sorry, I didn't, um, I don't have the information right at the top of my head, but um it's it puts us at forty percent of PG&Es. It's right there. But it's, it puts us at 40% of PG&E's, it's right there, 40% of PG&E's energy use. So it makes us much more competitive for energy, purchasing energy and clean energy. So it's a, it's a really exciting step.
Really cool. Council member Willison, did you, or was it council member Mueller? Or you said that you, you had something you want to share? Council member Mueller?
I did, and you guys are probably going to throw, we were, if we were at grammar school, you'd probably throw chalk at me right now. We, I know the 23rd is a, is a very long meeting already. And so I'm kind of guessing what the response might be to this. But I've had a number of reach outs from, from folks interested in the council looking at hazard pay for grocery store workers. And that, that policy being in, in, looked at to be from March and April and ending in June. There's a number of jurisdictions in the state of California that have either passed that or are looking at it presently. My guess is, with everything, that would be something that would have to come through the city attorney's office. And we'd have to look at it on the night of the 20, the night of the 23rd. So I know the timeline is short for that. So I'm asking if you guys are interested in looking at that, because I've had that request. But alternatively, if for whatever reason that you just don't think it's possible to, to actually look at that, if you would consider looking at a letter in support of county action on that. Because it's, I have, my information is that the county will be taking up the issue sometime before the end of the month. And a county letter in support of that action is something that certainly that we could look at and let the county know that we would be interested in them looking at, taking action on. So, and I think county action on that is actually pretty consistent so that there isn't, there isn't different jurisdictions during different things. So, so I can see an argument for that. But I can also see the argument for us looking at it as well. I just don't know, I just don't know what your response is going to be looking at the length of the meeting on the 23rd. So, but I raise it to you for your consideration.
Thank you, council member Mueller. So what's, what's the thoughts? It is a long meeting, but this is, has been an issue that has, obviously, as council member Mueller said, come up in a number of communities around, around the state. I know Long Beach and Los Angeles are some of the cities that I read a number of articles about. Again, this is hazard pay mostly directed towards grocery store employees of large, large chains, right? I think that there tends to be in some of these like provisions. And so in the Menlo Park context, I think we would mostly be impacting the two Safeway stores and possibly Trader Joe's. But I don't know, I think, I think Trader Joe's actually kept its hazard pay in place. Don't, 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 don't quote me on that. But so, so, so this is something that, that if Menlo Park wanted to act, there would be impact because we do have, you know, two large grocery stores. But, but again, there is, you know, obviously it would be a lot of community interest and likely, you know, an intense debate. Council member Willison?
Can I just ask a process question? Being a new council member and not having done my homework yet on the policies and procedure manual. And I remember there being changes in this. So is this, is this fall into the bucket of a agenda item that a council member is requesting to be put on the agenda? And then what are all the different avenues of that?
Yeah, so, and I'll let council member, you know, council member Mueller can, can ask me to put something on the agenda. Or he can in, in, in this, you know, during session, during, during council member report, see if there, there is interest from other council members. He, council member and another council member can also sort of brown act on something and express an interest in something being added to, to the agenda. So those are generally like, you know, some of the, the primary ways. But council member Mueller?
Yeah, I mean, basically, if I don't, where I would be is if I, the way I take it, I could, if I don't have three votes tonight to even look at it, what's the point, right? So if there aren't three votes tonight, if people say, I'm even interested in looking at it, then there's no point in trying to make remarks on the agenda. If there's three votes tonight to say, you know, I don't think we have, if there's three votes nights to say, I don't want to look at this, but I will consider looking at the letter that night, it's not even three votes for the letter saying, I'll consider the letter that night. Then that's something else entirely. So I've sort of put forward two things. Ken, are you guys interested in considering discussing hazard pay? Are there three votes for that? If there's not three votes that, and that, are you interested in just, in considering a letter to the county in support of a hazard pay ordinance? So.
And so I'll, I'll just sort of chain me quickly and then go around the horn. I'm, I'm more interested than the letter, than the act, than taking it up. That's how I would be most interested in. And, and so this question of, of staff resources, if there is interest in the letter, it would be to, to council member Mueller to direct, to sort of draft that letter versus putting it on, on, on staff. But again, that's, let's see, there could be, there could be the three, three votes interested in actually taking this, this matter up fully. So I'll go to council member Willison and then Vice Mayor Nash.
Yeah, and this might be, I'm not opposed or unopposed to it. I'm just, this is again, a processing. I don't know, like, I don't have any context. Like, this is the first I've heard of this, and I don't have a lot of background knowledge. And I remember, wasn't there some procedure where someone could like send a letter? Like, it just would be helpful for me to have a little bit of information before knowing what, what I'm making a decision about. That, that's kind of my, where I'm having a hard time right now.
Totally, totally fair. Council member Willison, Vice Mayor Nash.
So I am interested in it, but I think it's infeasible to do it on the 23rd, just knowing how much community input we would probably receive and all of the various, just the concerns and both positive and negative about doing this. So I'm much more interested in looking at the letter, and I would be interested in looking at the letter. And I guess I would like some clarification. Is it a letter, council member Mueller, which has already been, are we signing on to a letter which others are do, have already composed? Or would you be composing the letter? Either way is great. I'm just sort of wondering what we're talking about.
If you guys want me to draft the letter, I'm happy to. Actually, what I would do is I would try to get ahold of, I would probably talk with our city attorney and county council and find out what is the letter that matches with the county action that is, that they're, that they're looking at so that we're, because what's the point in sending a letter if it doesn't match with the, with the proposed county action is? So I would try to get some language around. So I know Santa Clara County is considering a county-wide action. I know San Mateo County, I have information that they are considering bringing forward a county-wide action. And so I guess there would be, if we're going with the letter, the condition precedent would be that I, that number one, San Mateo County was, was going to have that brought forward. Two, that I could get language that, of what it was that they were going to be doing. So I could present it to you all, so you all could say whether or not you're comfortable saying, whether or not you support the county moving forward on that or not. And it may just be, end up being a statement that we support. If I can't, if, if everyone can't get there, it might just be a letter that we support the county looking at it. But obviously, we would want to move it as far as the council was interested in doing so. So the good thing about this process, council member, for the council member Willison, is I'm not asking for you to make a decision tonight what you want to do. So we'll get information to you. I'll try to get as much information can as I to, to you for that letter, but not just because you need it, but because I need it. Before I vote on the letter as well. But, but I know that there's enough reach out on this that I think putting, being able to weigh in on whether or not we want to do a letter or not is fair. So.
And just, oh, and just one question, council member Mueller. A county action with that just apply to unincorporated county? Or would that apply county-wide to all, all, all cities?
Okay, it is my understanding that both counties are looking at county-wide ordinances because.
Yeah, right. So it's totally fair. Vice Mayor Nash?
So I'm concerned about staff time. And so if it's something which we can do without staff time, I'm interested in it. If it starts, as soon as it starts to stick, take staff time, I'm wondering whether it's something which we could do outside of council and just whoever is interested sign on to a letter and not actually use staff time or council time?
So you're saying individual councils send, individual council members send individual letters? That's fine. I can do that.
No, I was actually thinking that there's one letter and we could sign on to, I guess not as council members. I am concerned about spending on a very busy schedule, having this take much time.
So what I'll do is I'll reach out, what I can do to, what I can say to my colleagues is what I'll do is I'll reach out to the stakeholders in the county and get what the, the letter that they would most be interested in us signing on and present it to you all with information that they provide us to the letter. And then it'll either be sufficient or it won't. So, and if it's not sufficient, then it won't be voted for. If it is sufficient and people are comfortable with it, it will. So, but I'll try to get, I'll try to get, I'll try to get the letter and information for you all, and I'll just provide that to professional staff to put into the agenda. Is that fair?
Vice Mayor Nash?
So I assume it's added to the agenda, then it gets a staff report. So I'd love to hear from city manager Jerome Robinson, how that fits into the resources.
Yeah, we can have the city manager come on. It doesn't have to have a staff report. I'm certainly not saying that that means that there are no, going to be no staff resources devoted to this. But it's not necessarily a requirement that we have, we have a staff report. But certainly engaging staff on, on the issue is, is, is going to consume staff time, obviously. City manager?
Well, so we can, we can add it to the agenda if the council wants next week. And we can do, just as the mayor sort of outlined, with no staff report, no analysis, no evaluation, just put it on the agenda and the council can make a determination about the letter. I would, though, however, agree that if the council wants to take any action, it would be preferable to send the county a letter of support rather than taking individual city action. It's very hard for enforcement purposes if each city is adopting a slightly different ordinance for the businesses. And so I think just as a courtesy, if we could go towards a county-wide rule, that would be preferable.
Yeah, I think to that point, I think one of the issues that have, has emerged in Southern California, I think like the Long Beach ordinance excludes Target, like with grocery stores, right? But then the Los Angeles city ordinance includes, you know, Targets. And so it can, it can be a little, a little murky very quickly. Council member Willison?
Yeah, and I, I, the idea of hazard pay, like, conceptually sounds like a good thing to me. I don't, like I said, I don't know enough about it. To me, it's more about process. And I'm just, and this might be something we can talk about when we talk about council policies and procedures, because I do remember conversations, at least about statewide legislation. And I have been approached by other people about whether council would be willing to take positions on certain things. And so I just want to flag that is whether we decide on an ad hoc basis or we have, you know, a policy or procedure about we take positions individually or as a legislative body. But I think it would be something helpful to have a discussion around. And so that's kind of the way I'm looking at this. But it's, it's not to say that I don't see the value in hazard pay ordinance, though. I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, yeah, totally fair. And I understood your, your concerns as being directed at the process and not necessarily substantively about whether it's a good idea that grocery workers get hazard pay or not. Yeah, but, but yeah, I think the, what am I, oh, council member Taylor.
Thank, thank you. I had it the wrong hand initially. I'm, I'd be supportive of a letter. I think it's important, and I have been paying attention to it. And I've thought about hazard pay because a lot of people have been working nonstop, and they don't have the option of working from home.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point. And I think part of the issue here is that, of course, during the beginning of the pandemic, lots of these larger grocery chains gave hazard pay. And then they said it sort of quietly went away, even though the pandemic, obviously, as we all know, didn't go away at all. But I think, so the direction we have, I think, is that, you know, council member Mueller will draft a letter. It will be on the agenda. There will be no staff report. If, I mean, and we'll, you'll look at the letter, if, if, if you want to support it, if there's votes for it, then, then, then we vote for it. If not, then we move on. We're not, we're not going to sort of try to rewrite or ask anything. It's, it's, it's all or nothing. If you want to, the letter as crafted by council member Mueller, either we, you vote for it, you accept it, or you're not. It's, you know, if it is, it does definitely end up on the agenda for the next meeting. It certainly, I don't think there'll be enough time to do anything else other than, than sort of like support it or not. And again, and if, if there is a council member who for some reason doesn't want to support that, then obviously you have the right to send your own letter that says exactly what you want, wanted to say. And so, so that's always an option. And are there any other council member reports? Okay, well, then I think, I think that we are adjourned. Bye.